Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It's the appropriate hour and I want to welcome you to the October meeting of your Lewisville Town Council. Thank you so much for those who chose to be with us in the council chambers tonight. It's always good to see your faces. Thank you, folks at home. We're taking time out of your day to watch us on Facebook or on TV6. And I'm glancing back at Veronica and Veronica says we're on both of them, so very good. Thank you all for being with us. We have a lot of important business due tonight, so thank you very much for attending the important matters of your town. We'll start with our customary roll call of council members.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ivan Huffman.
Good evening, Julia Puckett.
Well, happy Thursday, everybody. My name is Melissa Hunt.
I'm Mike Horn.
I'm Ken Sadler.
Evening, Jane Welch.
Good Thursday evening. I'm Monty Long.
If you'll join us, please, for invocation led by Councilmember Monty Long and then the pledge of allegiance following that by Dr. Ken Sadler.
Pray. Heavenly Father, we gather here this evening, thank you for the opportunity to make decisions to better our community. We pray that you are with our residents along with our council members and our town staff. Father, we just pray for guidance, you know, to lead us in the future that glorifies you. Thank you for your love, mercy, and grace, in Jesus's name. Amen.
(Inhales) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Like Elvis, didn't it? Thank you very much. Councilmembers, we have had an addition to our agenda this evening. It will be under New Business I... Right, or L? Better put on my glasses. L. There we go. And this will be the addition of the Nissan House Sign Approval. And that's item L under New Business. Madam Clerk, has there been any other additions or changes to our agenda?
No, sir.
If not, members, we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
So moved.
Ms. Puckett makes the motion. I think Ms. Puckett made the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Madam Manager, the consent agenda, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight on our consent agenda is Resolution 2024-045, the financial statements for two months ending in August 31st, 2024, approval of agenda briefing minutes for September 5th, 2024, and lastly, approval of regular meeting minutes for September 12th, 2024.
Ladies and gentlemen, the consent agenda are items that routinely come before the council. They're our financial reports and our minutes. We take them as a group for efficiency. Any member of the council could pull anyone off to be considered individually. Council, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. Ms. Hunt makes the motion. Mr. Huffman makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. We have some introductions, even though he's worn his chair out a little bit and he's been here for a long time, it seems like an old friend. Stacy, you have a formal introduction of our new planner.
I sure do. Tonight, I'd officially like to introduce the newest member of the town of Lewisville team. Mr. Lynn Cochran has been hired as the new planning director for the town. Lynn is a Forsyth County native living in Winston-Salem, who brings eight-plus years of experience to planning to our town. He received his Bachelor of Arts in Environmental Studies and Geography from UNC Greensboro. He worked for Rockingham County Planning and Inspections as a planner, moved to Piedmont Triad Regional Council as a regional planner, and lastly, made his way back to Rockingham County later as a senior planner. As of May 2024, Lynn successfully completed the exam, becoming a credentialed member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. He started work with the town on August 12th and has since made great strides in the department, already working on the Unified Development Ordinance rewrite and learning all about Lewisville's charm. So, please welcome me or join me in welcoming Lynn Cochran as our new planning director.
I'm gonna turn pink. Thank you. I really appreciate that. I'm so glad to be here.
Very good. Welcome, Lynn. I know you're gonna be a great addition to our staff. We look forward to working with you. PJ, I believe you have your report for this evening.
I just gotta tell you, Mayor, it's amazing what a new pair of insoles do for a man's mood in his boots.
Thank you for sharing.
Yes, absolutely. So, just lighten the mood a little bit. Anyway, had a good week, had a good month. 708 calls for service, 379 security checks, 25 traffic arrests. So, the numbers are up a little bit from last year at this point. You can see we went from 477 and 207 security checks. So, still running about a five-minute response time. Not a lot to report, nothing major, which is good. So, just continue to pray for our folks up in the mountains, still sending a lot of resources that way. So, the community's really come together to make sure those resources have been utilized. And so, thank you for what the town has done, the town staff as well. So, I appreciate it. Hope everybody has a good rest of the week.
Any questions for PJ? PJ, I'm glad you introduced that subject. I was, for the last eight days, I've been up in a little town called Plumtree, and it's right on the river of the North Tow. And the devastation is quite severe and the need is still great. I am so proud of our town and our community and our staff and our volunteers. The truckloads of supplies that left here were amazing, and I can tell you that the folks that were at the distribution centers receiving just the basics, food, socks, clothing, batteries, diapers, I mean, all the things that we kind of take for granted, we just go to the grocery store and get them, all of those were well-received and those donations reached the people who were most in need. So, my sincere thank you and appreciation to all of those that had anything to do with our collection efforts here in Lewisville. Thank you. Thank you, PJ. Madam Clerk, you have a proclamation for us.
Yes, sir. Proclamation 2024-004 is for National Family Literacy Day on November 1st, 2024, whereas National Family Literacy Day, established by the 103rd Congress in 1994 and now marking its 30th anniversary on November 1st, 2024, highlights the importance of reading and learning for the entire family and emphasizes the impact that parents have on their child's learning. And whereas, this day is celebrated across America each year and focuses on special activities and events that showcase the importance of family literacy programs that empower families and build a nation of readers. And whereas, ill literacy programs across the United States will observe National Family Literacy Day by holding read-a-thons, book drives, workshops, and family activities at schools, libraries, and community centers to encourage literacy. And whereas, as many as one in six adults struggle with reading and writing, and by learning to read, individuals can gain self-respect and confidence and strive toward goals that otherwise would not be achievable. And whereas, the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution is a nonprofit, non-political volunteer, women's service organization dedicated to promoting patriotism, preserving American history, and securing America's future through better education for children and adults. Whereas educators being one of the cornerstones, the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution is committed to increasing literacy by promoting and supporting literacy programs. Now therefore, the mayor and town council in Lewisville do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2024 as National Family Literacy Day in Lewisville. To underscore the importance of literacy, celebrate the joy of reading, encourage residents to promote literacy by reading together as a family, and to extend deep appreciation to our local librarians, educators, and literacy service providers for their tireless efforts to strengthen the literacy of our children and our community, proclaim this the 10th day of October, 2024.
Thank you. Any questions for Dora? Any motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Welch makes the motion. Ms. Puckett makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. And you'll pass forward that proclamation to the appropriate people. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, we have an abundance of opportunities for you to address the council tonight. The first one coming up here shortly is our first public forum. Now, we will have a second public forum at the end of the meeting, but in between that, we will have three public hearings. And the first one will be for amending our UDO to allow driving ranges. The second one will be rezoning 7825 Shallowford Road. And the third one will be a satellite annexation of 7825 Shallowford Road. So if you're here to speak for any of those, please hold your comments for those particular public hearings, which we'll announce as they come up. Signing up first, Susan Frye. Please state your name and address, as you well know.
Good evening. Susan Frye, 165 Will Austin Court in Lewisville. I'm here to speak tonight not because of the upcoming public hearings, though it just might be another example of what I'm here to speak about. In September of 2018, I spoke here at a public hearing. There were two related items before the town council. One was a UDO change to a particular type of business from LDS2, I mean LD2S in the permitted use table to LD1S. The second action was to rezone a particular parcel of land from RS40 to LD1S. This is some of what I said at that hearing. My concern is that if we look at individual parcels or lots to rezone in order to accommodate single interests, we start to erode our plan, our town's vision. I have faith that if areas of Lewisville need rezoning to serve the citizens of Lewisville, the comprehensive plan will address that. And we have a new comprehensive plan since I spoke in 2018. There was an article in the Winston-Salem Journal about Savannah, Georgia. Their downtown had been designated as a national landmark district for many years, but in 2018, their designation was downgraded to threatened. The Parks Service said that the integrity of the downtown had been damaged by decades of development that did not conform to Savannah's town plan, too many allowances and changes to the permitted use and zoning regulations. Good news for Savannah is that in 2018, I mean, in 2024, that threatened designation was removed. We are not Savannah, but we do have a unique town plan. I picture Lewisville as a beautiful painting that was painstakingly carved into a jigsaw puzzle. A lot of thought and care went into where the trees, the houses, the parks, and the businesses would go. What I see happening as we amend permitted uses and rezone parcels, it's like taking one puzzle piece and chiseling it down until it fits somewhere else, and then taking another piece and sanding it down until it fits where you want it to go. It doesn't have to be a perfect fit, it just has to get into the space. If we keep doing that, the integrity of the beautiful puzzle will fail. Then it will be like Humpty Dumpty. Neither mayor, nor town council, nor comprehensive plan will be able to put beautiful Lewisville back together again. That was from 2018, and it's still relevant today. And I hope that as various requests come before you, that you will think about the Humpty Dumpty effect. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Next, Mr. Fred Franklin. Welcome.
Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing the public this opportunity to address you. For the record, my name is Fred Franklin and my address is 1420 Conrad Sawmill Road. As others who have stood here before me have said, I'm a proud tax-paying citizen of Lewisville. I'd like to address the council concerning Agenda Item 7K on tonight's agenda. I've looked back and read each set of approved minutes for each of the meetings this council has had since December of last year. Nowhere, not even in the minutes from this year's council retreat in February, is the term staggered terms mentioned until there was a discussion about the Arts Advisory Board that was reported in the August 2 briefing meetings, item 2B. Nary a time. Did suddenly, on the October briefing agenda for last week for council direction, it appeared. So here we are tonight. I'm not sure what the driving force behind this discussion is, but it should not be a knee-jerk reaction to stupid legislation, a bill that was attached to important legislation by members of our Forsyth County delegation, specifically retiring Senator Crowick and Representative Jeff Zinger. Just because all seven of the small municipalities in Forsyth County that have held nonpartisan elections since their incorporations will have to hold partisan elections during the next election cycle should not be a driving force. If you'll take time to walk around this room and look at the portraits chronologically from over there to over here, I think it would be obvious that the system of governance provided in our town's charter has worked and it has provided and delivered continuity of governance for more than 33 years that has provided both historical foundation and encouraged all citizens to run for office and bring new ideas to the table. To try to sum things up, y'all need to slow down, you need to stop and think, and you don't need to get your ox in a ditch. If it ain't broke, don't try and fix it. I'm not sure what each of your individual thoughts might be on this matter, and I look forward to hearing your discussion when you reach this in the agenda. But this matter has been discussed by various councils through the years and has been put to bed each time because we got in place what is needed for our town, and it works. Lastly, I recognize, excuse me, I recognize it would only take a simple majority of this council to vote the change, the charter of this town, and that's what concerns me the most. Right now, that simple majority of four votes could be rendered by four members of this council that have less cumulative experience of eight years sitting in the seats than you're currently occupied. Do you really think you're qualified and experienced enough to make this decision right now? If you're bound and determined to proceed with this crazy, needless direction for our, excuse me, for our town, at least have the courage to put the question to a referendum vote of the citizens so that we can have a say. If this measure were to advance at all, it should have a unanimous vote of the city council at the time. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and I, excuse me, and I want to thank those of you wearing pink tonight in support of Breast Cancer Awareness Month and continuing a long tradition of this council. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Appreciate your comments. Next, PJ Lancaster and Susan Linker. But I think it's gonna be, Andy, are you gonna come up and do the honors?
I'm gonna do the initial introduction.
Okay.
I'm Andy Kelly, and I'm with the historic Nissan House. I addressed the council back in February and showed you all our history display. So tonight, I wanna do two thing, or three things. I'm gonna give you an update, I wanna introduce our new manager, and I wanna ask you to spread the word about our new open hours at the Nissan House and how we're gonna develop into a history center. So, as the update, I've used the display at the distillery at one of their music venues. I've used it over at the coffee mill several times, had a lot of interest, and I've used it three times at the square before the concerts. And I've had some really interesting historic stories, and I gotta share one of them with you. I had a black man come up to me the first night, said, "I know a little something about history." Turns out, his name is Mark Addicks. He's a descendant of Crispus Attic, the first man killed in the American Revolution. His ancestor was a freed slave, and the British killed him in the Boston Massacre, 1770. I mean, we got people like that right here in Lewisville. So, I wanna introduce PJ Lancaster. I'm gonna tell you, we think we hit a home run. PJ's been in the area for over 30 years. She's got a computer science degree from North Carolina State, so we think she's gonna take us technology-wise in the right direction. And she served on the Lewisville Recreation Committee several years ago for a couple of years. So PJ?
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm very excited about what we're about to do in Lewisville. We are about to open the historic Nissan House, and I really hope all of you will come. I believe we're gonna start next week, and it's going to be during the day. But I just want you to know, I've been part of, I love Lewisville. I love the community. I love the connections we all make. I've been part of the West Side Civic Theater for many years, and the Parks and Rec, I actually helped design, Jack Warren Park. So that was very fun to see when we had our ribbon cutting for that one. I've had 11 years of experience at Old Salem Museum and Gardens. I am a, was a museum educator, and I'm also have been a teacher for many years in first through ninth grade. So I love education. So this is going to be a perfect niche for me because I love history. And I love the history of this town and all the history from the Revolutionary War and before to even the current history. All of that should be known to the public. And I know when Andy was talking about that poster he had, I was surprised at how many people came up and told us of their connections historically to people here. And I really hope you will support us, and I really look forward to working with you all to get this going and to spread the word. That's mainly what you can do for us. And I'm hoping to have school groups come soon into our building and also have different programming for adults, children, assisted living or independent living, either one. So I'd love to see a lot of programs. So I'm seeing a long-term future for the Nissan House, and I'm hoping it'll be one of those iconic places in Lewisville, like when somebody says the coffee mill, they know what that is. When someone says Alex's, they know where that is. I hope that the historic Nissan House will be the place that you all are saying, yes, that's in Lewisville, and that is a history center, and they have a lot to share. And I'm hoping you'll share with us too, because we'd love to know your histories. So I'm hoping that we will see you soon, and thank you for letting me speak.
PJ, I'll, first off, thank you for the work you did on Parks and Recreation, and I remember your contributions when we were doing the design of the community center. And that was a great time for all of us who had a little hand in doing that. But welcome. I know you're gonna do great things. If we can, if we can be supportive of you as a council or as a town, please let us know.
Thank you.
I'm trying to figure out who twisted your arm stronger, Andy or Susan, to take the job.
My own pretty well.
Okay. Good. That's great. Thank you, PJ.
Yes, sir.
Please, come on up, Kyle. Oh, Andy, real quick, before we go forward, what is your address?
My address?
Yes, sir.
I'm actually at 308 Springwater Court, Winston-Salem.
Thank you. Thank you, Kyle. Please come up and state your name and address.
My name is Kyle Stalls from Summerfield, North Carolina, 7823 Wiltson Farm Road, for those who care. And I'm just here tonight. I'm not part of Summerfield's leadership, I'm just on our planning board. But for those who follow the news, you may know that earlier this year, our town was involved in a rather convoluted conflict between us, a developer, and the General Assembly of the state. And over the course of that, I believe it was back in April, the town of Lewisville issued a very elegantly worded statement in support of the sovereignty of small towns across the state to determine our future. And so, I think we've sent thank you letters, we've made public statements, but we just wanted to have somebody come here to one of your council meetings to say thank you for that. It really meant a lot. We only received about 10 from towns across the state. Now, we had other towns that were willing to reach out and say, hey, we're with you, but we don't wanna say it publicly. So it took a lot of courage on the part of your town's leadership to stand with us on that, and I'm just here to say, you know, thanks. I don't have anything else to offer. But that was something that we were able to hand out to legislators in Raleigh. I never thought I'd be playing the role of lobbyist, but I did. And if I wasn't cynical before I am now, after spending some time in Raleigh, but it was a battle that we lost, but we knew that was the likely outcome, and you fight anyway sometimes. So I strongly encourage all of your council members, leadership, mayor, reach out to our leadership in our town, and my contact is on the sheet over there, if you want to learn more about what we went through, because the public record tells very little of the story. So, and I, this might be a strong statement, but I will say for our General Assembly, local government is kind of a problem to be navigated a lot of times. So just please keep that in mind and just wish y'all in your town all the best going forward. Thank you.
Kyle, thank you very much. We share your concern about the current state of the legislature. Over objections by this mayor and this council and the other mayors that Mr. Franklin had alluded to, they changed how we were gonna elect our officials. Over the objections of our folks, they changed how they were going to allow development to pursue in Lewisville. I'm not understating the fact that this is a pro-developer legislature. And if you're not concerned about that, you really do need to be concerned about it because it's changing the way that we are able to control and guide our own future. Our hearts are with you. I know that it was a big blow for you all in Summerfield, and your coming here this evening and expressing your appreciation is greatly appreciated. Thank you. Best to your mayor. All right, that concludes our public forum unless there's somebody else who wishes to speak. Anybody at all? All right, we'll again have another public forum at the end of this meeting, so thank you for taking time. Lynn, I believe you have our first public hearing on the agenda for this evening.
Good evening. I'm so glad to be here and actually have my first hearing. I was supposed to be here last month but was attacked by a virus. So thank you, Dora, for setting up the slides. Lynn Cochran, again, new planning director. Very glad to be here. We have, our first item to consider is Ordinance 2024-033, which is an amendment to the text of the Unified Development Ordinance. I've just put together some basic slides, giving you the overview of how this will work, the sections of the UDO that will be impacted. You all know that there's a history to this, that it has been back and forth from the council. Was first proposed, a golf driving range was first proposed and thought of it suitable for highway business. Didn't really work in this area, went back to the drawing table, looked things over, and came to a consensus that it would be suitable for driving ranges to be allowed in the same zoning districts as golf courses, since golf driving ranges are already accessory uses allowed to golf courses. So this matches up the uses and the districts in which they're allowed, between golf courses and golf driving ranges, which does allow them in many of the residential districts. But because of the similarities, it seemed fairly disparate to restrict driving ranges in the way that they had been. As far as the amendment goes, this will be the permitted use table and what it will look like, where these things are allowed. They will require planning board review. There'll be more than just administrative approval. And here are some things that were added on to the changes to the text amendment, rules for lighting, building setbacks, a slightly denser buffer yard limits on hours of operation, and best management practices, of course, in the Yackin River District. And then a small update to sign standards, basically to allow for wall and ground sides in the residential districts specifically for this use. And that would be the extent of it. No, I've gone too far. Dora, help me. I'm gonna start back over. Okay. That's the end of that one. If you guys have questions about that one, I'd be happy to answer them. I don't know what's going on.
Counsel?
Have a question, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Lynn, was the petitioners, had they approached the county and did the county rule on their opinion of this type of business in the area and the zoning?
I'll be honest, I don't have any information on what the county side might have looked like before they came to us to ask for rezoning. The district itself, and when we get to that in the next one, next public hearing, was RS40 Forsyth County, and it will be moving to RS40 Lewisville. And the uses are extremely similar, but that's the actual zoning amendment and annexation, which is coming up next. But as far as the relationship between what the county may have advised them, I have not had a direct conversation with applicants or owners at this point.
Thank you. I realize you came on kinda new and I'm thinking maybe our town manager can speak to you.
Well, I was gonna say, Lynn, if you could just kind of explain a little bit further of this, what's before them right now...
but what's before them right now is just a, a text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance for, for all properties?
Right. This, this applies to all properties. And for those in the audience too, to, to, to make clear, this first item is, um, an amendment to the text of the Unified Development Ordinance for the town. It will be applicable across the town entirely and across all zoning districts. The other items are parcel specific. This will allow this use in any of these districts according to standards established in the UDO. And the approval processes that will be set forth with it. Does that help at all?
Sorta.
Sorta?
A better chance to discuss that in, in more of the upcoming, and during the public hearing, I'm sure the petitioner is here and he can address your particular question.
Uh, yeah, that was gonna be my next suggestion. I imagine he's here and we'll, we'll have some, some word. Thank you Stacy.
Very good. Any other questions? Again, this is a text amendment to our Unified Development Ordinance to allow driving ranges in the residential RS 40. Uh, golf courses are allowed in RS 40. This is an ancillary use of a golf course. Um, and what is coming before us is to include the ancillary use in property that's already zoned for a golf course. Am I correct? Is that the?
Yes, sir.
Fair assessment, okay.
Yes.
Counsel members, any questions?
I have a question, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, thank you Lynn. Um, it's great seeing you over there in that capacity. And so I took a look at, um, about five different municipalities a, as it relates to kind of some of these text amendments and, and, um, adding, adding in the golf court, or excuse me, the driving range into the golf course. Um, they were, it was fairly consistent in all five of those communities where that, this was the case where there were driving ranges allowed in that, um, use table. Is that also what you have found, kind of in your research or staff found, that it's consistent kind of across other municipalities and other areas, this particular text?
From what's been reported to me from the early research that was done by Adam and Stacy, um, yes, it is fairly consistent. Um, and especially in a town like Louisville, that has the character of Louisville, where a golf course or a golf range would be very suitable. It, it just makes sense. And so I'm not surprised that there's consistency.
Great, thank you.
And once again, this comes to us with an affirmative vote unanimous by the planning board?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, uh, on our, and, uh, as I say, an amendment to our, to our, uh, Unified Development Ordinance. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak to the UDO amendment? Either pro or con. This is to speak to the amendment to our unified Development Ordinance. If not, council members, what's your pleasure?
I'll motion. Motion to approve, um, the ordinance, uh, L5, L168 golf driving ranges. I'll second.
Ms. Hunt?
Second.
Can I ask you to pack into the motion of finding that, um, this is consistent with the land use plan?
Did, a little more information on that. Um, tech, text amendments, unlike zoning map amendments, the legislature, state legislature requires considerations of consistency with the land use plan. The reasonableness component is not necessary. But some basic consideration of consistency with the other intents and descriptions of the land use plan, um, is what's expected for a text amendment. And I'll be, in the future, helping you guys with that a little bit more.
I'll, I'll modify my initial to include all of that consistently.
The finding is it is consistent, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All righty, we have a motion by Ms. Hunt, a second by Dr. Sadler. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous. Lynn, second public hearing, please. And this is on the rezoning of L 110 7825 Shallowford Road.
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, this is, um, ordinance number 2024-034. Unlike the text amendment, this is a request to specifically rezone a parcel of land. Oh, well, actually, it's technically two parcels of land, a large one and a smaller one directly adjacent to it. As part of annexation, which has been requested from Forsyth County into Louisville, towns have 60 days to apply their zoning district standards to annexed properties. So this rezoning is a result of the request for annexation, which will be the last item that we look at. But the specific request here is, I don't know Jane, if this helps you out a little bit, is to rezone from RS 40 Forsyth County to RS 40 Louisville, contingent upon the approval of the associated annexation request. Location 7825 Shallowford Road. This is a general use or conventional rezoning. There are no conditions attached to it at this point. Just a summary of what I, I mentioned before. According to the Louisville Comprehensive Plan, these area, this property is located in an area that's mostly directly adjacent to the rural residential place type, where RS 40 zoning would be entirely appropriate. Adam and I have looked at this. We find this application complete. A general statement, I always put in slides when considering a general use rezoning, you have to make sure you consider all the uses in the existing zoning district, all the uses in the new zoning district when you're making a decision, as opposed to one or two single uses. It's just a reminder to me and everyone. Um, what, staff thinks this is consistent and reasonable, uh, with the land use plan and the ordinance rules as they stand. Planning Board, Rugged, I believe you're naming to recommend approval.
Ms. Elliott was getting ready to remind us this is consistent with legacy.
Yeah. Consistent with the comprehensive plan.
I, I think, uh, if, if a motion to approve was, um, wanted, that, that motion could be made and to adopt staff's, um, statement.
Yeah. It's got, that, that's, that's the way to do it, is to simply adopt a statement that staff finds this requested rezoning consistent with the Louisville Comprehensive Plan and reasonable when considering all the allowed uses in RS 40 District in Louisville.
Any questions for staff?
Yes, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you Lynn. Could you speak to that, um, area that says requires consideration of all uses in the current zoning? What would other uses be included in that?
So that's just a basic statement, that, um, when you're considering a zoning map amendment, you're gonna change the zoning of a specific parcel. Statutory guidance says that governing boards have to look at all the uses in the current existing district and all the uses in the district that you'll be rezoning to, as opposed to a conditional rezoning, where you might be only considering one or two uses with some extra standards. In this case, the uses allowed by Forsyth County in RS 40 and the uses allowed by Louisville in RS 40 are very similar, if not identical, in almost all cases. So there wouldn't be a significant change or allowance for new uses in RS 40 by rezoning it.
Yes, but my question is, what are some of the other type of businesses?
The principal residential, the principal use in RS 40, of course, is residential. Typical accessory uses, often, um, uses that are more suitable for less dense areas. Uh, I couldn't list any off the top of my head. But you would not have uses allowed, um, that are more intense commercial, more intense industrial. Those would just would not be consistent with the area. Outdoor and recreation, um, in some cases, uh, which matches up with this. Something I can think of off the top of my head. Stacy might have a couple more that she can think of. But that, those classes of uses are what you, uh, would be allowed in RS 40.
Thank you.
I hope to have a little bit. When I've been here a year, I'm gonna have those uses memorized.
I'm sorry.
When I've been here a year, I'm gonna have those uses memorized.
Thank you.
But what you just said though, prior to that answer was that the current zoning in that area in the county
Yes.
permits exactly the same uses that will be permitted if we approve this. Is that right?
Essentially, yes.
Yeah.
We reviewed all of those. Uh, Adam did and included that in the staff report for this item and, and found that the uses were very similar. Most likely because the ordinance we currently have is a sort of a descendant of former Forsyth County ordinances and that's why we're looking at updating it now. So the uses are really similar.
Any questions for staff? Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing and this is for relook, rezoning, uh, 7825 Shallowford Road. We've had the staff presentation. This is the public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to speak? In support of or in opposition to? I do wanna, uh, reference, um, Councilmember Welch's question about, uh, was the county approached? So if the petitioner has any comments on that, I believe you are in attendance, while the rationale for, uh, yeah, if you would come up and maybe, maybe address that, that would be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hello, Council, Ricky Lyons, 6183 Old Fields Way. Uh, when we began this process, it was basically about a year ago. Uh, we did approach the county. We went through a sketch plan review. We never went any farther than that, uh, when we started it. Then through discussions with people from the town, uh, led us down this path. Thought it'd be great to be part of the town, the small town atmosphere. We feel like we fit in the plan, adding a recreation ability for everybody to use in Louisville. So that's really where we went to.
Ma'am, um, thank you Ricky. So when you did do the, just initial steps with the county, what was their response to you?
Uh, they really thought it was a great plan. Uh, when they looked at their legacy plan, I don't think they would be, I believe if you look at the UDO, they were the exact same. So you could have put a golf, you could have put a golf course out there, but not a driving range. So there was never a yes or a no. We just sort of walked away from the process there.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak? Mr. Franklin? Or actually, I should say, please come up and state your name and your address.
My name is Fred Franklin, 1420 Conrad Sawmill Road. I obviously will not be swinging golf clubs anymore. So I really don't care about the driving range or this, that, the other. My only comment is, is it took probably 40 years of hauling stumps in to fill that hole up. You know, basically my whole lifetime. Uh, just a few years ago, they finally got the hole filled up. Uh, they put a top over it, uh, sowed some grass on it. Now, as I travel down Shallowford Road to, to access 421 North, it looks a heck of a lot better than it did for years and years and years and years. So that's all I can say, is the current piece of property where it lies used to be a hole that they hauled stumps in for 40 years. So, take it from there.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? All righty, this closes the public hearing. Council members, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve, uh, rezoning L 110, uh, 7825 Shallowford Road with staff comment included.
I second.
Very good. Mr. Huffin makes the motion, Ms. Puckett makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
That is five, or six in the affirmative with this Welch in opposition. Thank you. Lynn, the final item you have is the satellite annexation.
It is, which is the principal reason, um, much of this is being considered. Just one slide on that. That's a summary of the ordinance, uh, 2024-035. It's an ordinance to extend the town limits of Louisville to incorporate, this is a satellite annexation, to incorporate this parcel. A note for the tax pins, approximately 16.76 acres. Just wanted to squeeze in a little map for you to give you some reference about the parcels and what they look like. And again, this process by allowing, by accepting the petition for annexation, then we've rezoned the property and we've established how these uses work. So it's reasonable to assume that might be a use for these property.
Any questions for staff?
Sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so how far is this satellite annexation? How far from the town boundary is this particular parcel?
I knew that question was kinda, and I measured it and I'm, I wanna say it's, it's less than a mile.
Okay.
It's less than a mile.
All right, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff? All righty, council members, entertain a motion. I'm sorry, we gotta do the public hearing first.
Yeah, yeah.
Very good. This is a public hearing on a voluntary annexation of 7825 Shallowford Road. Anybody wish to speak in support of or in opposition to? I see nobody moving forward, so we'll close the public hearing now, council. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve annexation satellite of 7825 Shallowford Road.
Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion. Mr. Huffin makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Dora, you have an appointment for us.
Council, at your seats is a voting ballot. If you would, please select one individual to fill the unexpired term on, as an alternate to our zoning board of adjustments. There were two applicants and you would only vote for one.
Council members, please do some, put it on the rail inferment so we tabulate it. Since you have the next item on the agenda, we will, uh, we'll give those to our finance director. I think she can count to seven.
I can give you the results right now.
Very good. We're with bated breath.
So you have selected Kelly Revis Jr. to fill that unexpired term as an alternate.
Very good. Kelly, congratulations. We've, uh, you've been part of the town for a long, long time. We've known each other for a long time and, and thank you very much for coming back and considering service to the town. I know for a while you were, you were, had stepped away because of business and family, but we're glad to see you back. Thank you very much. Now, Dora, you have the first item of new business.
Council, the next item before you is the 2025 meeting schedule proposal. The schedule does outline the meetings for the 2025 year for both our boards and our committees. And it also outlines it for the town councils, agenda briefings, regular council meeting, council retreat, budget work sessions, and the North Carolina League of Municipality City Vision.
Council members, we've had this presentation to us at briefing. Are there any questions for staff? Entertainer motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Huffin makes the motion. Ms. Puckett makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. Elliot?
Yes, on the next item, uh, 7B, uh, Mr. Mayor. In short, uh, this is essentially an administrative, uh, issue to, uh, correct a, a small error in a, um, resolution that this council passed a few years ago. A little bit more of the backstory. In the original plat of Shallowford Lake subdivision, the developer had set aside a little space for a public road right-of-way. And many years went by and no road was ever established. So a few years ago, uh, there was an initiative to withdraw that public right-of-way, which would, uh, essentially revert, uh, ownership of that little space to the adjacent owners. The council passed a resolution at that time and it had a small error in it. It said that the road, um, way that, uh, was, um, in controversy here was between lots 17 and 18. And in fact, it was between lots 18 and 19. So this resolution is, is merely just to correct that, that small administrative error in a former resolution.
Very good. So you're cleaning up our mess from two years ago. Okay, very good. Council members, any questions? Entertainer motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Long makes the motion. Dr. Sadler makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Elliot, you have our remote participation policy update.
Certainly, Mayor, on item 7C, uh, this is a revision of the remote participation policy. Uh, so, uh, the, uh, council has established policies for, uh, when, um, members of the council or other boards can, uh, zoom in to meetings, so to speak. Uh, and, um, recently, the North Carolina Court of Appeals, uh, rendered a decision in a, in an appellate court case, um, that, that clarified the rules on that. And the upshot of the decision was that a quorum could not be established through remote participation. Uh, our existing remote participation policy does allow a quorum to be established. Our existing remote participation policy does allow a quorum to be established. So we want to update the policy just to confirm that we can't establish a quorum by remote participation, have to have live bodies to be consistent with this recent court ruling.
Any questions for Elliot? Yes, sir.
I do. I just want to clarify or just ask, is there any exceptions to that policy? I know that we've got it, but for those in the audience, that would allow remote participation to be satisfied as quorum?
I don't think so that we've... Oh, I'm sorry. Well, yes, let me clarify. If there is a state of emergency declared, then you could have a fully remote meeting. So a few years ago, in fact, the legislature passed a new statute that essentially clarified that you could have remote meetings where nobody shows up in person if there is a state of emergency going on, such as what existed during COVID for some time. So if we were back in that situation, we wouldn't have to worry about this particular point. Everybody could remote in if need be, but that, that would take a literal state of emergency declared by the governor.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Entertained a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion. Mr. Huffin makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Dora, special projects review policy.
Counsel, in front of you is Resolution 2024-048 to update the special projects review policy. The only changes to this is to clean up a little bit of the language, such as change of finance officer to finance director. And we did completely streamline, update the application.
Any questions for Dora?
Yes, please. I just wanted to thank Dora for making those adjustments and also the others that are on that committee, which is Ivan and Julia. Thank you for your participation, and it needed to be done. Thank you, though.
Any other questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Welch makes the motion. Mr. Long makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Stacy, you have a budget ordinance for us.
First of many. Before you is Resolution 2024-036, last month. And also at the briefing last week, if you recall, a request for proposals was published for a classification and compensation study for the town. We did receive four proposals back. All were responsive. But the proposals that came back, they came in at the lowest being fifty-five hundred dollars, the second being ninety-two hundred dollars, the third being twelve thousand ninety dollars, and the fourth being twenty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. So what I do is I go through a scoring mechanism and based on qualifications, based on responsiveness, based on timeframe, cost, all of those different things that are included in that request for proposals and score them against each other. The MAPS group is the one who came back, the most qualified, in my opinion, the, the one that we would get the best outcome for what we were looking for. Scored the highest, put forth the best proposal. They are coming in at ninety-two hundred dollars. That is an eighty-seven hundred dollar contract with a five hundred dollar travel and training budget, a not-to-exceed price. So I am asking tonight for a budget amendment of that full ninety-two hundred dollars in order to start that compensation study for Resolution 2024-036.
Stace, if we, if we approve that this evening, what is our timeframe for completion?
It would start in November and be completed by March of 2025.
Any questions for Stacy?
Yes, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Just wanted, has there been a study in the past? And is, is this put before us because you feel like we maybe do not have our compensation in accordance with what, with what we should have?
Well, if you recall, we, this came out of the budget workshops that we talked about. Just the, there's a vast difference between salaries in the town for different employees and at different jobs. There are job descriptions that need to be updated. The last thing that I can find was in 2015, a version of a compensation study was done by just the manager at that time. Personnel policy needs to be looked at and updated. That, that is part of this study that's going to take place. And then again, job descriptions, we actually have some positions that need jobs descriptions, not just those being updated. So I do feel that, that this is something that really needs to be looked at as a, as a town. The salary grades need to be looked at. For the vast number of positions that we have, since we have such a small staff, we have one individual doing something, we have one individual doing something else. You know, a lot of us are very specific in our duties of what we do because we do have a small staff. It's not like we have, you know, five or six different people in the finance office that might all be technicians, or, you know, we just have one, to give an example of that. So to answer your question, I do believe that it is needed. And 2015 is the last time I think this has been looked at. Not fully completed a study, but just looked at.
And never by a specific company or...
No, ma'am. Not to my knowledge.
Dr. Satter?
No, dear, excuse me. The, the study is not going to be... It will provide recommendations, but it will not be a mandate. Is that right?
That is absolutely correct. Yes, sir.
So any adjustments to compensation will be based on changes? Well, the rewrite of job descriptions, if that occurs, that would suggest that a, an adjustment to compensation would be appropriate?
The, the, if I, if I'm understanding your question correctly, the, the job description would not necessarily determine that they would need a difference in compensation, just that the description needs to match the specific duties that they're doing. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah. Because what I, what I, in the previous discussions we've had about this, what I recall, and help me if I'm wrong or misremembering, there are people who are in positions where the job description is not comprehensive in regard to all of the things that they do. And so it may be that their compensation does not match up to all of the responsibilities that they have. That's really the basis of the question.
That very well could be in, in a, in a few of our positions. I, I don't see that happening in all of our positions, but just a few, that, that could very well be the case.
Yeah, because that, that would be the basis on which you would make a determination if somebody's salary would be adjusted, I would think. Because if they're doing, well, I guess there are a couple of different ways to look at this. First is the market.
Correct.
And so if the market is such that people are not being compensated appropriately in any, either direction.
Right.
Overcompensated, undercompensated, then you would want to look at it and, and make sure that you're fairly compensating people. For people who are doing things that are recognized but not specifically addressed in their job position descriptions, then you would want to make sure you're recognizing those things and then adjust their compensation if, you know, if, if they were in a different place, their compensation would be different. So that, that's, that's what I'm trying to make sure I understand. I think it's comprehensive in the approach that you're using. I don't, we, we really haven't discussed all of the aspects of what this company is going to look at. So it's more than just how somebody is paid. It's what, it's the description of what they're doing, and then personnel policies associated with all those things.
Yes, sir.
So that, that's, that's what I'm trying to make sure that we're clear about. Not that, I mean, I may be the only one that's not clear about it. But that, that's why I was asking that question.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, not so much question, but just a general comment in regards to this. I know that in the three budget seasons that I've sat in, compensation has been a long-discussed topic. So I think it was prudent, and I applaud you for pulling this into something that we're going to be looking at, not to mention that it is an independent review. Dr. Satter just mentioned some of the things that were going to be within the scope of this from this particular company. Do you have that list that you went through with us?
I do.
Can you go through those for just our general public so they understand exactly what the scope of that project's going to look like?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So a lot of the items that are included in that scope of work is they're going to be doing study orientation sessions with each of the employees to review and study their existing positions, having conferences with the employees, doing surveys of the employees, but then also meeting with department heads and the manager to verify that information of what the employee is doing. You know, did they leave anything out? So, so we can make sure that there really is a good overall of what everyone is doing. Preparation of those job descriptions, but then also determining what position should be exempt or non-exempt when it comes to the Fair Labor Standard Act. Doing a salary survey of public sector jurisdictions that are very similar to the town of Lewisville in the way that we operate. In that, ensuring ranges are competitive and efficient to attract and also retain employees. But then also with that determining that our wages and benefits packages are actually competitive for the market, so we can attract and retain employees if that need comes. Preparing an updated play, pay plan, those are those salary grades that we take a look at every year as part of the budget. Giving those implement, implementation options and what cost would be associated to those different options. Say, for instance, if they come back to us and say, you know, these are the different jobs that might need a bump, or these are the ones that might be overcompensated, how that looks and, and how we would implement those things in future budgets, and then what those costs would be to implement those things. Again, a comprehensive review of the town's personnel policy, modernizing that, making sure that we are effective in our HR management and effective in the current laws and regulations that are out there for HR. They are doing the study in person. That is something that I, I liked about this particular firm. Two of the other firms wanted to do everything virtually. And then at the end, the MAPS group will come and do a final presentation of their recommendations to town council, which would complete the study in March of 2025.
Thank you.
Any other questions? What's your pleasure, council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Makes the motion. Ms. Puckett makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Stacy, you have our voice and internet contract.
Yes. Next is Resolution 2024-049. This before you tonight is a resolution to renew a contract with Spectrum for the internet and phone services that are provided at the town's facilities. This is a three-year contract. We are just coming to the end of our existing three-year contract with Spectrum, so we are looking to renew with them. The contract amount is ninety-one thousand four hundred and forty dollars. And again, this would be for those three years. And it is actually a savings that we have found from our, our last three years with a little bit better service, especially for town hall. So I come before you tonight with that resolution, asking for the contract to be approved for Spectrum.
Any questions for staff?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Long makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Stacy?
Okay. The next resolution on the agenda is 2024-050. This is an amendment to the Kimley-Horn Preliminary Engineering and Design Contract for the Lewisville-Viana Road and Robin Hood Road Roundabout Project. If you recall, we've, we've been working on this project for quite some time, looking at design plans for that roundabout, for the construction documents and everything. So there's a new policy that comes out of the North Carolina Department of Transportation that no longer allows any wet utilities, which be your, like your water and sewer lines, to be, to run in the pavement in a roundabout. That policy is new. So when this original contract was signed and those, those plans were designed, the water line was actually designed to go through the roundabout. But since that policy has changed, now the, the plans have to change. So this amendment to the contract, taking into account those changes required by NCTUT, the utility plans have to be amended to relocate water lines, hydrants, meters, et cetera, all outside of the roundabout. This amendment also includes the additional meetings and coordination that has to be associated with those, the different approvals they have to go through with NCTUT because of the updated plans. And the amendment amount to the contract is thirty-three thousand sixty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Any questions for staff?
Yes, please. And anticipated completion date with this new requirement?
It, it didn't set us back too bad. I know that we, gosh, this is, this has been on the books for quite a few years. But since we were able to finally get started, it, it's moved along fairly good, in my opinion. So we're hoping that this is kind of one of the final things, to get all of the plans approved, so then we can get those construction bid documents together and go out for a bid for a contractor within the next, I would say, four months or so for construction to take place during 2025, would be my hope.
Is this a 2080 project?
It is.
Where the town pays twenty...
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
For those of us who, who recall when this first, when this project was first approved and funded, it was scheduled to be done the September when our new middle school opened. And now it's two years past that, and we're going to be a third year. Unfortunately, money is tight and projects come slowly. And people say, why can't we get a road improvement done? Why can't we get a roundabout done? If we ask for a new project today, it will probably be between eight and 10 years before that project can actually occur. So we've been fortunate in, as a council, that we've looked at projects well in advance. We've gotten funding for projects, but the downside of that is costs go up. So we have to go back for supplemental funding. And rules change, as Ed has in this particular roundabout. So buckle your seats. When we get the contract in for actual construction, I suspect that will be a little bit of a bump there. But this has been a, and works for a long time. Thank you, Stacy.
Absolutely.
So this, so this resolution, that if we approve this, this gets us around the roundabout?
Yes, sir, it does.
Motion to second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Stacy, utility relocation.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I didn't catch who made that motion and second.
I believe Ms. Welch made the motion and Mr. Long seconded. No? Let's re rhyme this, okay?
I think it was...
We're going to go back in time for four minutes.
Wasn't me.
There was no motion.
We'll go back in time for four minutes. We have a, any more discussion, if not, entertain a motion, staff members.
Like to make a motion.
I'll second.
Very good. We just have the opposite order that I just stated. Mr. Long makes the motion. Ms. Welch makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, folks. All righty, utility relocation.
Yes, sir. So Resolution 2024-051 is to authorize the town manager to enter into an agreement with Duke Energy. The agreement is for Duke Energy to relocate the dry utilities, that's poles, lines, everything kind of above ground, for the construction of the Lewisville-Viana Road, Robin Hood Road Roundabout. This agreement is in the amount of two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. And this again would be towards, so they can actually move those utilities so we can move towards construction of the roundabout.
Any questions for staff? Not entertain a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Makes the motion. Mr. Long makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. GWR, Stace?
Okay. The next two items before you are related to the Great Wagon Road. We'll take the first item, Ordinance 2024-037. This is to amend the Great Wagon Road Improvements Capital Project Ordinance for an increase in the amount of six million, two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and seventy-two cents. This budget amendment is required in order for us to take action on the next item before you, which is a three-party agreement. So what that three-party agreement is, is between the North Carolina Department of Transportation, the city of Winston-Salem, and the town for the water and sewer lines to be constructed within the Great Wagon Road during construction.
Very good.
Questions?
Any questions for staff?
I think during the presentation last week, it was pointed out that we've got a couple of related projects going on. One is a pump station, and the other is this project. And the, we're not currently in a position to fully fund the two of those projects, is that, is that accurate?
That is accurate. This would not have to be paid for, for at least two years.
Okay, so, that would mean that we would have to have at least a plan.
Correct.
To cover the gap, the delta between what we've got and what we'll need, which is about, well, $2.7 million. I'm just wondering, none of us really know in two years what's gonna be happening and where almost $3 million will come from, other than, you know, the general fund. So, you know, this gives me pause. I mean, I know it's one of the things that needs to be done in conjunction with the construction of the Great Wagon Road. The thing that I wondered about since last week was the pump station, because it's been a while since we've gone through that approval process. I don't recall what was driving the timing on that project. So, what is it that necessitates whenever it gets done to be done?
I'll speak to the pump station first. The timing of that was to be constructed in conjunction with the Great Wagon Road. In addition to that, then speaking to the water and sewer lines, we wanted the contractor that NCTUT hires to go ahead and install those water and sewer lines during construction so after the fact of having a brand-new road, we wouldn't have to tear it up to put in water and sewer. The plan is to prepare for future development in our downtown area. Our comp plan that was spoke about earlier does mention that, in our downtown areas where we would want that commercial to be concentrated in town limits. So, the purpose or the idea was that all of that would kind of be going on together, water and sewer lines being constructed during construction, and then having the lift station constructed to serve those lines. So, it all kind of had to, had to be an idea that worked all simultaneously.
Right. So, what I take from what you just said is that the pump station that currently exists could not handle the additional capacity, is that?
That is correct.
Is that basically what it is?
Yes, sir.
So, it'd be hard to do them separately?
Correct.
Or not in concert? And I don't know anything about water and sewer. I mean, I know something about it, some of it you like and some of it you don't. So, if, there's no way to meter capacity through those water and sewer lines? The reason I'm asking that question is, if the pump station, if you could meter the flow through those lines to the pump station, then the current pump station might be sufficient, long enough to get to where you have the money to cover everything. That, that's what, that's my thought process. Is that faulty?
To be honest, sir, that would be a question I would have to ask the consultant that's designing or either City Winston-Salem Utilities, to see if that would be a possibility.
All right. Yeah, it just, it just concerns me to, I mean, you know, two years from now, I'm not gonna be here.
You'll be here, but not here.
Well, I won't be on the council in two years. And so, you know, that, this decision could impact whoever that council is in two years, and they have to figure out how to get $3 million together and to take it from the general fund is, you know, that's, it's not particularly appealing.
I agree.
So, anyway, that's, that's why I'm raising the question.
Are we in discussion right now?
Yes, yes, we are, certainly.
Okay. To Dr. Sadler's point, I think that there's a couple of things, Dr. Sadler, too, that I heard last Thursday. One is this does not include betterments. So, the 2.7 is sans betterments.
Might be a low number.
Right, yeah. So, we'll have that additional, additional funds that will be needed for the betterments. So, I, like Dr. Sadler, I am kind of at a pause, and I believe I asked you the question last week, you know, what happens if we do nothing? And is it, is it DOT that's kind of given us the direction on, hey, we need to go ahead and get the agreement in place?
That is correct. They do need the agreement in place in order for their approvals to go through Raleigh, in order for them to finally go out for construction bids. All of the agreements for every portion of the construction and who is responsible for what has to be in place before they will approve those so they can go out for construction bids. And their deadline for that is in November, I believe.
So, this alternative that Dr. Sadler has surfaced potentially, of us holding the pump station construction up, would there be a way to move the monies from, that we've already got allocated for the pump station into this part of the project if we wanted to do an alternative?
I'll let Pam, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think most of this now, the initial funding is going to come from the reserve that we hold, the water and sewer reserve that we hold with City County Utility Commission. Do you want to speak to that at all, Pam?
I think what you're asking is the reserve held at the, at the City County Utility Commission, is it adequate to cover the water and sewer lines for the GWR if we do not do the?
Pump station.
Pump station, correct. Yeah, I mean, the capital reserve right now has $7.4 million in it, and this project with the water and sewer lines on the GWR is estimated at $6.2 million, so.
Thank you, thank you, Stacy.
Just for some historical reference, when we were first funded for this project, Mr. Franklin remembers this, it was a town project, it was an 80/20 match, and the project was estimated at $12 million. Since then, a number of, obviously, the costs of everything are going up, but fortunately, DOT undertook this project as a DOT project. The estimated cost for completion today is $42 million. So, the longer we wait, obviously, the more it's gonna cost. I share everybody's concern about this, I want to, maybe a little glimmer of hope in this discussion in that we are not unusual as a municipality in finding that what we had initially anticipated is gonna cost us more. And so, municipalities all through the municipal planning organization, which is Winston-Salem and Forsyth County, and Davie County, Davidson County, our little group, we're all going back to the state and asking for supplemental funding. Now, we'll do that with this project as well. So, I'm hoping with a little luck, we'll get some supplemental funding there. Additionally, we're gonna explore potential for water and sewer grants that are out there. There's state water and sewer grants, there's also federal water and sewer grants. So, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna say that this is, that at this particular point in time, this whole thing is gonna be funded out of our general fund. That may eventually be the case. I hope it isn't, but I believe we can go back and potentially have some supplemental funding on this project.
We're gonna have a reevaluation hit?
Correct.
In the midst of that as well.
I mean, the paradox of this is that DOT does not want water and sewer going through a roundabout, but they don't mind it going through the Great Wagon Road. So, I don't know. Somebody smarter than me needs to figure that one out. Ladies and gentlemen, any? Yes, sir.
Really, my question was, could you flip the priority? It's not to not do the water and sewer down the Great Wagon Road during construction. And, you know, I'm not often in conflict with you, but this notion of we may get grants and we may get funding is a hope.
Exactly what I said.
Right, and so, it, you know, I don't know if I'd do my home budget on a hope. So, that's what my problem is with it. And if we could flip the priority and not do the pump station right away, then, you know, I'd be fine. I mean, you may all vote to do it anyways, but I'm not, you know, I'm not a voting board, but, so, anyway.
Yeah, Stacy, I think, I think, and I'm gonna test my memory here, but the lift station that's designed now is only designed to carry the shopping center. It's not designed to carry the new load.
That's correct.
That will be with the new water and sewer that goes through downtown. So, we can, certainly, we can ask for the consultant for another opinion on that, but the construction of the new lift station is designed to handle the additional capacity.
Sure. Let me ask a different question then. So, this, the water and sewer lines that are being proposed to go down the Great Wagon Road would be water and sewer lines to nowhere, they'd just be stopped if this new pump station was not created to handle that? Because if it's only doing right now the shopping center, then it doesn't, that's not affected by it. The only thing would be affected by would be the water and sewer lines coming down the Great Wagon Road and whatever, whoever would tie into those to use them. Is that what I just heard you say?
I'm not sure I understand your question, Dr. Sadler.
Well, let me, let me go backwards then. What I think I heard the mayor say was the, the pump station is only sufficient to handle the shopping center right now, right? So, it's not handling any capacity other than that right now. And so, these water and sewer lines we're talking about would just be, to use some sort of common terminology, you'd just be capping those lines until such time as you could tie them in.
Right, yeah, but, but those could not be tied into that existing?
No, I understand that.
Okay.
I understand that. And so, that would just mean water and sewer lines would terminate wherever they terminate in anticipation of tying them into this, because that's what's gonna happen at some point. You're gonna have water and sewer lines going to there that the capacity's not even gonna be, I'm assuming it's not even gonna be used because it doesn't exist right now. So, that's what I'm, that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking, is you get the lines down there, you know, you cap them, however people, however that's done. And then, when it's time, the pump station, you got them in, you paid for them, and then when it's time, the, the pump station could be updated. That's what the question is, that's.
I do want to remind us that we have approved a, how many unit? Housing development?
Fifty, sixty, something.
Fifty-six units that are on hold.
Maybe off on that.
Until we can get the capacity.
Town home development.
Town homes.
They'll be on hold.
And so, until we can get the capacity, they're on hold.
I hear you, but they would be.
And so, it's not, it's not, it's not a pipe to nowhere.
Well, you said until, right? So, they are on hold until?
Right.
You get capacity, they would still be on hold until you got capacity.
I mean, yeah, we can, we can kind of chase this one around a little bit, but I'll flashback a little bit to the investment that we made in the Muddy Creek, Muddy Creek Fred or?
Harper Road?
Harper Road. Harper Road Lift Station. We made an investment of $400,000 on that, hoping that in some, not hoping, but knowing at some point that we would be utilizing that capacity. I think that our investment in water and sewer is, it's kind of like the Field of Dreams, you build it and they will come.
But we're getting some return on that already, right?
None.
It was $600,000.
Where did the $900,000 a year come from? I'm just not.
That's our, that's our current arrangement with WS.
WSFC.
Right. And, and you, you know, you continue to use the term until the capacity is there. And there's nothing in my question that would preclude doing both of these things. It's just a timing issue, is all, I mean, it's, I don't know. I mean, if you, if you say the timing, you can't do it in that fashion, and you can't do it in that.
I mean, I think that's a great, I think that's a great question for our consultant, our engineering consultant. But I don't think they would recommend not doing a lift station and running the water and sewer pipes. I think that it's, the water and sewer pipes are useless unless we have a lift station.
I, I agree with that. It's not that you never have a lift station, it's, when do you have a lift station?
You wait three years to build a lift station, and it'll cost you 20% more.
How smart.
It's like everything else we're doing, is that you put off.
That's a million more versus three million more.
Or, or whatever the numbers are, I'm not sure those are the numbers.
Okay, well, I don't know either.
But, but I think that the, the package, the lift station and the Great Wagon Road and the water and sewer have all been engineered and designed to work together.
Right.
It hasn't been designed to be put together components. Let's do this now, and then let's do this later. That's not how the whole thing is designed.
No, I hear you, but, but my, the question's not been fully resolved. The answer's not, anyway. You know, I mean, I'll stop the discussion, and then council can do whatever council will do.
Yeah, well, I don't want to leave the residents with the impression that we are getting ready to spend money that's unnecessarily spent.
I'm not saying it's unnecessarily spent, I'm just saying.
It's always kind of clear on that.
We don't have it.
Well, we do have it in the general reserve.
Okay.
So, it's not, it's not like we're having to bond it or borrow it, we have it in the general reserve.
Right. And that reserve has been built over 33 years, and it's been gradual over time. So, it's not gonna be rebuilt, you know, quick. I don't know whether we'll need it or not need it. I mean, we could just spend a reserve down to, you know, whatever the bare minimum is for, in terms of the requirement, I don't know.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may. So, when it comes to our reserves, we've got quite a few reserves. There's probably, I think, on the, and Pam, I may need your help on some of this, but I think we got a couple thousand, a couple hundred thousand that's gonna be left over from the Public Works Reserve that we can, that we can put back in general fund? Or what, how does that work if we've got extra money in some of those other reserves?
Well, in the Public Works Facility Capital Project Fund, you're gonna need that money for renovations to the?
If we choose to do.
Once we purchase the building.
If we choose to do one. So, that may be a timing and discussion council that we could have if we were able to keep Public Works building as is and do minor, that may help give us some money there. I'm just, my point is that I think we may have some money that we can, it's not gonna be 2.7, Dr. Sadler, but I think that there may be some money that if we had to prioritize differently on some of the future needs. Could we move the money to, from like Public Works into the Great Wagon Road?
You can, you can move between capital project funds, yes, you can.
And what else do we have? Do we still have the sidewalks?
Well, I will say, under the community center, we still have $260,000 in that fund that we haven't closed out yet. That can be moved. Yes, we do have money into sidewalk capital projects right now. And like you said, you do have the revow coming up in January, so we don't know how that's gonna land. So, there are possible pots of cash there.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt the discussion, ma'am.
No, that's fine, I was, it was a, pardon. Any other questions? Very good. May we have a motion on Resolution 2024, 2024-037?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion, Ms. Bucket makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I'll need to show hands, please. The, again, show hands, those in favor?
Favor?
In favor of the motion? Those opposed? Okay, the motion fails, four to three. I just want to be clear, by not passing that motion, we stop the project.
That is correct.
That is correct. So, council members, once again, I want you to understand that the motion you just made, that the motion you just did not pass stops the Great Wagon Road project. What potentially that means is that money will be pulled from the Great Wagon Road, out of DOT, and applied to another project.
Let's be clear about that now. So, is, is putting water and sewer lines down the Great Wagon Road a requirement for building it?
No, it is not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm confused.
The, the Great Wagon Road project would, would continue, we would just not have water and sewer lines in there for, for anyone to hook onto.
Thank you for the clarification, okay. So, we'll have a road that can't support the capacity that could be built along it?
Correct.
Okay.
My reason for that vote was, I'd like to see that question be put back, you know, could we not do them together, but, you know, switch it like you were saying? And then, that wouldn't necessarily be for a long time, because as you said, costs go up. But I just think that question wasn't answered, that we need to study that. that question wasn't answered, that we need to study that a little, at least get that clarification.
So Stace, will you ask our engineering consultant that question and find out what the resolve might be and come back to us in November briefing?
Mayor, my understanding was that she needed to make a decision in November or by November regarding the project. So is it worth us calling a spec, is that you need to let DOT know?
Well, also need to let the city county utilities know because this, this agreement goes before the commission on Monday for them to approve as well because, because it's that, a three-party agreement. So if it doesn't, if it isn't approved by the town, then it, it doesn't need to go before the commission to be approved as well on Monday.
So if there is, if, if council wants to consider some modifications and conversations about the action plan of how we're going to fund the project, could we call a special meeting between now, I mean, that gives us tomorrow. But is, is it prudent if we want to, because I don't think I'm hearing council say they don't want to proceed forward with the project. I think what I'm hearing council say, and I, and I'm speaking for myself, what I'm saying is that the funding and the way we're going to fund this, to me, hasn't been vetted out enough to where it's clear on how we have the potential to fund it.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to disagree with you, Mayor Protam, because I believe it has. If you look at the handout that Pam gave us at briefing, it's also in front of you, shows where the money is coming from, what the shortfalls are. It does leave us with a shortfall of $2.7 million. We know that if there are no other sources for that $2.7 million, the funding for that is going to come out of the general reserve, which currently stands at $7 million. So that's where the funding will come from.
But if there's an alternative where we can get the project approved, where council is in agreement, then we have an opportunity to move the project forward. If the only option is to pull it out of general fund, what I'm hearing council say is that's not an option. Or that's where we got?
I don't know if that's an option or not. I'm not sure that that's, I'm not sure that's, that was the, that was the resolve point.
Okay.
Yeah. What I will say that we are, if you read our comprehensive plan, and I know all of you have, the comprehensive plan talks about concentrating downtown, in downtown area, all of our development. In order to concentrate development downtown, we have to have water and sewer, period. The installation of that water and sewer, most efficiently, can be done at the same time that we build the Great Wagon Road. We don't want to come back in the future and tear up the Great Wagon Road to put water and sewer in. If we don't do it now, then we have to come back and purchase additional roadway, potentially to run water and sewer. So I, I, I keep going back to what, what we've been planning for the last 20 years is to have the GWR to support downtown development. But to support downtown development, you have to have water and sewer. And I don't understand, I don't understand the discussion really about lift station or no lift station. I think that's a, that's a whole different discussion. What we have just done, what this council has just done, is we basically said, we're going to stop water and sewer and it's going to cost us a whole lot more money in the future. We cannot have downtown development without water and sewer. And I'm going to keep saying that until, until somebody says, shut up, you're wrong. But you cannot have downtown development until you have water and sewer. If we wait on water and sewer, it's going to cost us more.
And mayor, I don't think that, from my point of view, I don't, I don't feel like that that's my angst. My angst doesn't come, I, I understand the process. I understand what needs to happen. I understand we want to lay ground instead of tearing up ground in the future. I understand the cost impact. What I'm trying to better get a grip on is this transferring from the general fund when we've got reserves that we could probably have moved. I mean, it would have been nice to have seen the layout illustrated where we took $600,000 and put it in, you know, we don't have that illustrated. Right now we're illustrating that we're pulling 6.2 million out of general fund. When Pam clearly just said that, hey, we've got about at least 200, 300, 400,000 from somewhere else that we can move over. That would have been nice to have seen in the illustration. That's kind of where I'm coming from.
Can you speak to that, Pam? Because I'm getting a little confused because I'm with the mayor. I, I understand the cost. I think if we delay this, it's going to be, and Stacy's is correct, it would mean new plans. Once the road is built, then they're going to have to be whole new plans to how to tear that road up, to put the water in. That's going to be costly. We could end up with greater cost, I think, in delaying this. So can you speak to what you were talking about as far as, is that reasonable or feasible?
Stacy, would you like me to go through the list of ideas that we had for sources of cash? We can, mayor?
If I would help address Mayor Protam's question, yes.
Okay. When we saw how big the price tag was going to be, we did, we did search for cash where we would have extra cash so we would not have to pull from the general fund. And, and these are some sources that we came up with. For one thing, in this current fiscal year, we are, we will be transferring all of our other ARPA money into the general fund. So that's about $374,000. There's a pot of cash right there that you can use. I'll come up with a grand total for you so you don't have to add these up. So that's $374,000. We also have investment earnings on the ARPA money. That's sitting in another fund. We can use that as well. That's about $166,000. And then we also looked at the two sidewalk projects right now that are on the books that, that are basically at a standstill. They do have money in their project funds. The Lewisville multipurpose path has $371,000 in it. The Schalaford Road C-Max sidewalk project has $273,000 in it. And then, as I mentioned before, we have some money still left in the community center capital project fund. That's $265,000. So all of those amounts that I just mentioned come to $1.4 million compared to the $2.7 million deficit that we're projecting. We also did go as far too to kind of look at what the revow might, might do in January. And what we were kind of projecting, if we maintain the same property tax rate that we've got now, which is 21.7 cents for $100 evaluation, if we had a 10% increase in our revow, that would yield an additional, approximate $384,000 per year if you don't go revenue neutral. If your revow went up 20%, that would be an additional $768,000 per year. So that's, you know, that's also another source of, of, of revenue to kind of boost the general fund.
And what's that average been in past years? You mentioned 10 and 20%. What have we been looking at reevaluation in, in historical?
Four years ago, I can't remember exactly how much the revow went up. It was not a great amount though. But I think we all know house values.
But that was uncharted territory.
Yeah, house values have exploded. So we don't really know for sure what to expect as far as what the revow will hold.
So there've been some other communities that have already gone through evaluation. I know down east, there's some counties that have gone through revaluation. Have we looked at that to see what that kind of impact has been?
Are you asking, have we looked at that?
Yes.
No, we have not. No, sir.
Because I don't, I don't know how that tracks across the state. I don't know if in the eastern part of the state, if revaluations bring in, you know, increased property values by 10 or 15%, that follows suit here. So I'm just wondering if there's any comparability across the state in terms of what the impact of revaluation is.
Pam, you have had some guidance from the league though, haven't you?
No, we have not, sir. No.
Or the county tax assessor?
He has not.
He's holding his cards close.
10%, you're still running, what were you running on that one?
An additional $384,000 per year.
So now we're at 1.7. We're pretty, we're, we're within a million dollars of the 2.7. If we, if that's.
That we would take from the reserve.
Correct.
Well, it's even closer than that.
Not take from the reserve, take from those other items that I just mentioned.
Right. Because she said it would be 1.4, I think.
Correct.
Yes, she did. 1.4, yes.
And then you've got 380 twice. In the two years you'd be waiting. Assuming you're revenue neutral. I mean, assuming you don't, assuming you allow the tax burden on folks to go up by whatever the revaluation amount is.
There, there is one unknown out there right now though, and that is the roundabout project and how much the construction will be. Because that, that is a large unknown number that's hanging out there right now.
That's a 20% number?
It's an 80/20, yes. Yes.
And there's no projection on the cost.
But it's, it's capped at a certain amount. It's not unlimited.
Right.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, and we talk about prioritization, is it, instead of us approving an ordinance where we're taking it out of the general fund, could we modify the motion to pull out the excess out of the funds that we currently have? If it, take a vote on that. If it makes any difference, you won't actually be moving the money right now. You won't actually move it until two years out. But yes, you can change the, the ordinance to have the money come from somewhere else other than the general fund.
I think, I think that's, that's the point, Pam, that you just made is that that is not an outflow for two years. So at that particular point, we will have a better understanding of what revenues are available to us. We'll still have those, the monies that are in the current reserves available to us. We just don't know what our future revenues are going to be.
For me, it's a little bit more palatable if I see an ordinance that states that we are going to, we're going to reprioritize and move some excess money that we've currently got in funds into it versus if we approve an ordinance that says we're going to pull this out of our general fund. That, to me, is a little bit more palatable and maybe a little bit more palatable to council so that we can get this moved forward.
I think.
Could we go in and vote on it?
Uh, no, but I, I think we're having a discussion that we were going to have to have eventually, which was about our two sidewalk projects. And they have been, they have been approved with 80/20 funding, funding. We have money in both of those accounts. The council tonight could say, we're going to cancel those projects. And that's a vote that we would take and then that money is available to do what you're talking about doing, if that would make you feel better.
I'm one of seven, mayor. Thank you though. But I mean, I, I, council, I mean, definitely, I'm, I'm just trying to find a collaborative area here.
And that's what we're all trying to do. I mean, it just feels, this feels far too emotional. And I understand the passion associated with it because you're going to hear that come out in cave when we get to it on my part. I'll get real passionate about that item. But all I was asking, and I don't, and I don't know if we asked the question about timing. I heard you say the city county utilities or whatever they call themselves these days was going to be taking it up Monday.
Correct.
Is that the last opportunity for them to take this up? You know, if we, if we delay until we get some additional information, is this their last opportunity to take it up?
For, for this three-party agreement, NC DUT is also included.
I understand.
They have to have all of their agreements in, in place and approved by November the 12th.
Okay.
So if you back that up, the, the commission wouldn't meet again until after that date is why we're both taking it up in October.
City county meets after that date next?
I believe so.
After Monday.
Pam, is there any downside? Like if you move money out of those areas now and it was needed in those areas later, is there any downside to that if we took the money from those areas versus?
Keep in mind, you're not technically going to, going to take it yet. Although if you do decide to use the sidewalk money for the, out of those two projects, whether or not you decide to cancel the projects or not tonight, if you take the money out, basically you've taken out your, your intended match. So if you're going to use the, the money out of those two sidewalk projects, you don't want to use that money unless you do intend to cancel the projects.
And again, doctor, I, I will, I will not apologize for my passion on this, but I do think I'm logical in what I'm saying. We've all been on the council for a long time. This project has been on the books for a long time. We all know, at least I think most of us know how critical it is to downtown development and what we've talked about in our comprehensive plan. So if my enthusiasm for discussion comes across as passion, well then that's fine. I'm, I'm, I'm good with that. But I, I, I hope I'm not appearing illogical.
No, mayor, you know, I don't think that's the point. Yes, certainly. And for the project, it was that concern, we have worked for, what, 30, over 30 years to have a healthy general fund. It was just that amount of money and how that was going to deplete it. But having more information about where we can move monies from, from other allocated areas, you know, that, that makes a difference too. We, we're going to have over a million more than we thought. But it, for me, it was that, God, we're going to deplete that general fund so severely. Hard to accept that after working through the year so hard to have that healthy, really healthy balance. So it's not that, you know, certainly want the Great Wagon Road and want sewer, et cetera. It just, could we, like Ken had suggested, not do it at the same time?
Were you under the impression that we were going to deplete the general reserve by 6.7 million dollars?
Yes, until, it was explained, no, we can move monies around.
I was the same. I, I thought we were depleting the general fund and I was going, my goodness. So I wasn't aware of these other monteries that might be available to help if I'd known that to begin with.
Would you like to ask for reconsideration?
That's why I approached the topic, mayor. Some of us may be around in a couple of years and we want to make sure it's on paper that, yeah.
So let us, let us take this in two steps. Number one, I believe, Elliot, maybe you're on board with this or not. In order to, Pam, to allocate the money from our sidewalk projects, we have to agree to remove that money from those capital reserves.
I won't say that you're required to cancel the projects in order to move the money. But when we put the money in those projects, that was intended to be our match based on what our budget was at the time. Right, our, our portion of the agreement for the funding.
I'm not sure we have to, to cancel those projects or move it from the sidewalks. When we have the five or six other funds, we can collectively pull together.
Well, no, two of those, that is.
Two of them or of them. Of the 1.4.
Yeah.
Okay. So we would have to.
And I guess the question is, do we need, would, would the Mayor Protam and Councilmember Welch and Councilmember Long and Councilmember Sadler feel comfortable not canceling the sidewalk projects, but knowing that at a future date, we can take that action and allocate, reallocate that money if we need to? That way, we're not, we're not signaling to the DOT that we're withdrawing from the project and they, they move those monies other places? An agreement?
I don't have a problem with that, but the last part of the statement I don't think is, is accurate. I don't think that DOT, they don't have any, they're not putting any, they're not putting up this money. The only money they're putting up is for the construction of the Great Wagon Road, which would be constructed. So that, that's just for clarity.
Yeah, let me, let me pause there because that's, that's not completely true. The funding for the sidewalk is from.
Oh, you're talking about sidewalk. I'm not talking about sidewalks now.
It's from, it's from sidewalk projects. It's from C-Max.
So that's what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
Mayor, so we could, staff could construct an ordinance or we could modify the motion or, or direct staff to amend the capital project ordinance instead of the language they have here with the transfer from the general fund, it would simply state transfer from the four or five funds that Pam alluded to? Is that how we would construct this?
I think maybe if you want to amend the ordinance, I think an amendment to that ordinance would be with the potential to transfer money from existing reserves to the projects. Does that make sense? And that, that kind of covers what we're talking about. So let me then kind of see if I can steer us back into, may I have a motion to reconsider the previous action of the council?
Motion.
Can we add to that, that we could still ask the question? Could they not be done simultaneously on how that would affect? Okay. Is that good?
Yeah, because it doesn't, that, asking that question of the engineers, dis resolving all the questions, I mean, all those questions may be bad questions. I mean, it may be that, you know, none of this stuff is doable. But I don't, I don't know the answer to that. And we're just assuming that the answer to that is no.
However, this discussion that we just had and the vote we just had was predicated on the question about which lift station could possibly be constructed at a different time. That vote, if the, if the, if that's the question, the vote. That vote, if that's the question, the vote we just took is a different vote, because we just voted to basically not participate in an agreement for the water and service.
Exactly, because the previous question had not been answered.
I don't believe we'll have that question answered before the timeframe.
But even if you don't have it before, if you get, because the answer could come back, that, yeah, you could do it. And then you could just decide then, at that point, what you want to do about the lift station.
You and I are concurrence on that, that that should not be the lynchpin that causes us not to approve this ordinance.
I hear you. The, it's all timing stuff, all right? Because this has come to us kind of in the 11th hour to approve. And so, that creates part of the problem. You know, we're having to prove it, you know, under the gun, because Monday is a, you know, drop-dead date. That's the only, it's a timing issue more than anything else.
Well, and I don't think that precludes us in the future. If we want, it'll be a binding agreement. We cannot, once we pass this, we can't really, we can't really back out of it.
No, I understand that.
That would harm us with two of our very valuable partners.
Yeah, but this one, I agree with what we're talking about now, that's binding. That's really, that's really the reason that I was reluctant to, personally, to agree to it. Because once you say this, then you, you know, you got to do it. So, I mean, it's reputational, and so, we don't want to sully the reputation of Louisville. And what, my previous comments, you know, we've known each other, you know, 30-plus years. It's not about challenging whether or not, that, I mean, passion has a lot of different faces, okay? And this is really not about whether we're in conflict over comprehensive plan and, you know, and all of the things that we've done through the years. I've been there for all of it. This is really just about, as I said to you earlier, dropping this on somebody else in two years. Because it's not going to be me. I don't know who else it might not be. But I will be making that decision. And so, even the revaluation question is a revaluation, is a question, is revaluation this fall or next?
This January.
Oh, in January. So, that's going to be staring the next council in the face, too. What do they do? Are they going to be revenue neutral? Are they going to, you know, that's essentially a tax?
That should be answered by this council.
We said it's in January.
It's in January.
Oh, they'll come out in January. So, if it comes out in January, you know, during the budget year, we have to decide if we're going to have additional tax burden on folks. I mean, that's, you know, that's all, transparently, that's all of what's going to happen in anticipation of the needs. So, that's what that was about. It really wasn't about, you know, whether, it wasn't a pejorative comment about your passion. So, anyway.
If we can't move off this point, if council members want to consider the motion that was previously passed, then we need a motion and a second to reconsider.
He's got a motion from Monty to reconsider.
Why, Monty, but we do need a second.
The recon, okay. Questions now or no? Wait, you want me to wait to clarify, for clarifications?
No, the motion would be to reconsider the previous motion, and then we'll continue discussion on the previous motion. And that's where you would have the opportunity to talk about the language in the orders.
Okay, all right. Yes, I would like to move forward with that.
So, you make the second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. So, the motion made by Mr. Long the second was made by Ms. Hunt. Any further discussion? All who's in favor of reconsideration of the previous motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Now, back to the question on the ordinance before us. Mayor Protem, you have some wording, potentially, that you would like to clarify in this ordinance?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to clarify the revenues as we're transferring the revenues from the GWR Construction Capital Reserve, that we move them from our current cap, help me with this, Pam.
Let me clarify first. Do you want to leave the money in the two sidewalk projects that are not moving along right now?
We don't need the money right now.
Well, I should say, do you want, you do not want to make any decisions about those two projects right now?
I think it's prudent not to, if we can.
If I might make a suggestion, then, leave the ordinance, the amendment to the ordinance as it's written right now, except add one paragraph. Right now, it shows the money coming out of the general fund. A lot of this money's going to flow through the general fund anyway. But maybe put a paragraph in there saying, because we deal in exact numbers with these ordinances, do a blanket paragraph that says, this, we will also use, and I'll come up with something better, use revenues from any, any funds that have completed or closing out, any leftover funds, basically. Because you have leftover funds in the community center. You might have funds in those two sidewalk projects. And that kind of gives us a, gives us some documentation that gives proof of this conversation and your intention.
And other reserves, should we choose?
And other reserves, should you choose, yes.
So, an amendment paragraph then would say?
And then, when the time comes to actually move the money, then you'll amend it again and put in exact numbers. But basically, that gives us a trail, that the discussion was had, that the intention was that we don't want to pull from the general fund unless we have to. We would like to pull from these other sources first. That's basically what that paragraph would say.
So...
Would that be okay with?
Do we want to take a five-minute break while we craft that language?
The pleasure of council? That's fine, yeah, make it clear. We still want that question answered about, you know, do they have to be done at the same time?
Yeah, I'll make sure.
Yes, I just want to make sure that in that five minutes, or if we do decide to take that, that the paragraph is clear that we will be choosing, and I may just be misunderstanding, we'll be choosing those reserves in the future, that it's not a blanket statement that all these reserves are open cash for this project. Because I know we mentioned one reserve earlier that I'm adamantly against us moving money until that project's absolutely done. So, I just want to make sure that there will be another vote to move money out of each reserve if this council wishes to.
There has to be, because it would be, it would have to be a budget amendment. You can't move money unless, you can't move money between funds unless you have council approval to do it, if it's not already budgeted to do so. So, we would have to come back before council.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, we want to take a five-minute break here while we make sure we have the correct language crafted?
It sounds good.
We're going to break for five minutes? Has everybody returned?
Yes, sir.
Very good. So, Mayor Protem, would you like to make the motion for adoption of this ordinance with the addition that our finance director is now going to read?
Everybody ready? To address the potential shortfall, other town reserves and excess funds in existing capital projects should be considered as funding sources before funding the shortfall from the general fund.
Did you need my, you needed my acceptance, Mayor?
I know. You would make that motion?
Oh, motion.
Yeah, motion with that language.
Yes, I would like to make the motion with the modified language, as Pam, just for approval.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion, as Welch makes the second. Any further discussion? All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. That is unanimous. Thank you. Councilmembers, I truly appreciate the discussion we have, and I appreciate all the points that everyone is bringing up. Your thoughtfulness and your consideration and your train of logic is always unique to our council, and we do that without acrimony or without getting up and shooting each other, or throwing chairs at each other in some councilmember's cases. All right, and moving on, Stacy, this is just the, this is the approval of the resolution for the utility agreement.
It just authorizes the town manager to enter into that agreement now that that capital project ordinance, the funding, has been budgeted for.
Any questions? Mayor Tatum, motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Puckett makes the motion, Mr. Long makes the second. Any discussion? All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Now...
So, if you recall, at our briefing meeting last week, we had a robust discussion about staggered terms and if the council would like...
Stacy, I'm going to pause just for a second, but I want the minister to reflect that we are going to explore with our consulting engineer the lift station option.
So, we did have a robust discussion amongst councilmembers about if the town was interested into moving towards staggered term, four-year staggered terms rather than just the two-year terms of all seats being up for reelection all at the same time. So, as you'll see further down in the order, in the agenda, there was a motion and a vote for that to be explored further. And so, it was requested by council that it be put on tonight's agenda in order for us to determine the path forward for the staggered terms to be put into place. Mayor, I'll turn that over to you for that discussion.
That's a good summary. So, the question, councilmembers, to discuss this evening is what path forward we would like to take?
So, it was a vigorous and robust discussion last week at the briefing. And I mentioned that this is something that's going to be passionate for me, primarily because, you know, I was there at the inception of the town during the creation of the charter. And it's not like we didn't think about what the structure of the council should be and the terms that council would serve. The only other change to charter occurred, you know, a few years ago, and that was based on some potential litigation that the town might face if the charter was not changed. And, you know, during our discussion last week, there were, you know, comments about, you know, history should matter, but maybe not much. And, you know, tradition is important. We, during our discussion just a few minutes ago, we talked about the comprehensive plan and the importance of following that plan moving forward. And so, we came to the resolution we just came to because of that, I think. And so, you know, it's, it's important to me to maintain the tradition of the town. And I don't know where, who is asking for this change. I don't know why it's thought to be important, although I have heard, you know, we want to have consistency in the council and that sort of thing. But in 33 years, we've not had any kind of an implosion of the town because we operate the way that we currently operate. And so, that's, that's why I've been in opposition to the stagger. Now, majority of the council last week wanted to move forward with staggered terms. And so, when that discussion occurred, you know, we're talking about then how, what would the process look like? And there are a couple of different options. One would be, the council can simply change the charter, which happened in the previous change to the charter. Or it can be placed before the citizens for a vote in a refer, form of a referendum. And I don't, I don't know the urgency of doing this. And I've said this, I'm not just saying it now. I've said it to the mayor, you know, I've said it to others. If we're moving forward in that direction, I think it ought to be the prerogative of the citizens to determine whether stagger, we should change the terms of service of council members. Now, you know, we talk, we had two public forums tonight. And you saw what happened during the public forums. You know, it's not, there's not, if there's not a, a process to get this in front of citizens so that they're really alerted to what's about to happen, then it'll just go through. And, you know, we'll have staggered terms, and then you'll have folks on council for four years without the ability to change if you have somebody who is not operating in the best interest of the town versus two years where you'd have the opportunity to change those folk. So, anyway, that's kind of my thinking about this. I'm not going to change my thinking about this. But what I would do is encourage the town to, or the council, if the council continues to move forward down this path, to strongly consider a referendum now. It was determined last week that there's no cost to add it to the ballot. So, the only issue is around timing and whether it should happen now, prior to the November election or for the successive councils. There might be a way to do it in conjunction with the coming election. I don't know the answer to that question. I haven't, haven't heard the answer to that question. So, anyway, that's, that's kind of what I'm thinking. That's kind of what my opposition was. You heard former councilman Franklin speak to this. He was, been part of these conversations. He mentioned that we, this has been surfaced multiple times through the years. And every time it was surfaced over the years, including last year, I believe, it was defeated. We decided not to move forward with it. And now, it's surfacing again. You know, I'm not sure. I guess, if you ask the question often enough, maybe you get the answer you want. But I'm opposed to it. I've been opposed to it. I don't see the logic of it. I don't know. We know what the experience in 33 years has been. This notion of we might have a bad, something happen in the future. Well, we might, you know, an asteroid might hit us next week. But we don't, we don't know what that is, but we do know over the last 33 years what has occurred, and nothing is bad. The town hasn't imploded because of the current approach that we use. So, anyway, that's, that's my take on it.
May I share some thoughts?
Yes, ma'am.
You all know I'm new to the council, and I'm looking at this in a very objective way. I'm a retired educator. I also work for city government in Winston-Salem. My parents are veterans. I am very much respectful of tradition. I don't know that I call term limits tradition so much as the way that things have been done. And I'm respectful of history and looking at the way that have been, things have been done and learning from that. I also, a few thoughts, again, you know, I'm still feeling my way here, and I guess that's one of my points. I see pros and cons in both two-year terms, which is what, you know, I ran on, and in four-year terms. The two-year terms, yes, they're shorter. You have a quicker changeover. As a new person, I'm going to tell you, I'm just getting my feet under me, okay? I ran to represent my fellow townsfolk, but you have to do a, there's a large learning curve in this position to really do a good job and serve in the way that you want to serve. And everything I've ever done in my life is about service, okay? And I got that from my parents, being veterans. You serve. You do things to make things better. So, as I move, as we get to November, I'm going into, what, my first year, and I'm still learning. So, I'm really going to be flying in my second year, and boom, then it's done. So, that's one point, okay? That's my con about that, two years. And you are just getting your feet under you, getting up to speed, and beginning to really be able to hear the people that you're serving and to do things for them. And someone also, I guess Dr. Sadler mentioned, you know, if you get someone on the council that isn't working out, they've done something egregious, whatever it is, there's a process for that. You don't have to have a two-year term to get rid of someone. Am I correct, Mayor? There is a process if somebody did something that was so egregious that they should be removed? Yeah, so, you could remove someone, okay? So, someone could be removed. So, I have two thoughts about it. It's not because I don't want to campaign again. I believe in public opinion. I want to know. I am in agreement with Dr. Sadler. I want to know what the public has to say about it. I want to know, I am in agreement with Dr. Sadler, I want to know what the public has to say about it, what my fellow citizens think about it. I also think about our staff who work very, very hard. They support us in every way imaginable. And every two years, they have to draw a blank slate and start all over again with new people. Unless, of course, we are voted in again, and that's more than possible. But like I said, I have pros and cons about both, but I don't want any perception that I really don't think anyone in the council that is, say, let's move forward and explore this, is against hearing what our fellow residents have to say. I certainly want to hear, and we did hear somewhat tonight what folks had to say. And I'm not disagreeing. But I am being objective. I'm looking at it and I'm still thinking about it. I want to make a fully informed decision when I do make a final decision on it. But there are pros and cons, and I hope that the folks out there do look at both of those. I, I'm sorry, I don't agree that it's a tradition. I think it's just the way things have been done. And as someone that has worked for, well, quite a long time, I'm older than most people think, change does happen and it's not always bad. And I think we also looked at municipalities out there. And I had, I have friends in other municipalities that were shocked when I told them that we had not moved to the staggered four-year term. So there's that to consider too, that, you know, there are others out there. They had charters just like us. And I respect the charter, but that doesn't mean that you don't make changes when they are for the betterment of the town that you live in.
So the notion of tradition, maybe you misunderstood my intent in the use of that word. What, what I mean by tradition is not specifically about a two-year term. It's about honoring the direction that was set when the town was created. That, when we had charter discussions, it's not like four-year staggered terms didn't exist 33 years ago. They have. It was just a consideration of what we thought might be best for Louisville. You know, this notion of getting, coming onto council and getting up to speed, yeah, everybody has to do that. But it's been rare that anybody has served one term. Rare. Most people have had multiple terms. And so the notion of, well, I need to get a four-year term so that, you know, I can get up to speed however long it takes me to get up to speed. You know, the counterargument to that is, well, if I'm not gonna get reelected, doesn't matter anyway. You know, you just, you'd be gone. So, you know, I, and this is not really point, counterpoint kind of stuff. That's not what I'm trying to do. What I'm trying to do is just to try to give you a, the group and the public a sense of, of how we got to where we are and how successful it's been through time. And that I don't think we need to worry because, you know, the elephant in the room is gonna be partisan elections. Well, we don't know what that means. We don't know who it will be that will surface to serve. And, and we don't know how they will behave. Mayor said that the only way you would remove somebody is, is if they created, you know, something, did something illegal. We even have people do bad stuff that's not illegal. And so those people, you can't. There could be things that they could be doing that are counterproductive. They, they might not believe in the comprehensive plan, for instance. They might not believe in legacy. They might not, I mean, it'd be a whole series of things that they might not believe in that created all kinds of strife on the, on the council. And you got four years to deal with that if something like that occurs. So that is what I'm thinking. I mean, I'm not really opposed to it on the basis of just being opposed to it. I'm just, I've just lived through this over the years and I've just not seen the evidence that supports this notion. You know, if it's, if it's modernization or something like that, I've heard that term used in, in this conversation. There could be people who would argue then modernization would be, we ought to have drive-through McDonald's restaurants in Louisville. That would be, in some people's view, modernization because, you know, you look all around us, they're drive-through restaurants. But it's, but our tradition has been that we don't have that. So that, that, you know, that's, that's what I'm talking about. I'm not really opposed to it, just, just to be opposed to it. I'm just saying that I don't really see a reason to do it other than maybe there'd be a problem in the future if we don't.
Mayor, may I add?
Yes, sir.
I, I want to say since our last conversation, I spoke with a gentleman who has spent significant time in city government. The town of Midway, I want to say about 10 years ago, they were, I believe they're still on a two-year term plan going forward. During their elections, they didn't have enough people to run to form a quorum. And that is something that, to our conversations here, it's one of those issues that could happen. I, I don't come here to say that we're, what's worked for Louisville's worked. My concern's not now. My concern is possibly 10, 15, 20 years from now when it's, or in that situation. Have we already made a plan that works and other areas illustrate that it does work? Midway is one example of that where this two-year term didn't work. And they had, it took them significant time that did not allow them to work on projects to find other people to run. And that's just one of my key areas is I want to make sure that in 10, 15, 20 years, we have procedures in place that protects the town's interest. And I think having three to four people that have had the experience and have had that understanding and the knowledge of working with the, with the staff, that maybe if it's not all seven, get replaced, but in the event that all of a sudden not many people want to run, we're protected. And I'm not gonna say it's a guarantee. There's no guarantee in anything, especially in politics from what I've learned in the last year. But it's something that does add a level of protection. This conversation is not a, I don't think it's a partisan conversation. Yes, partisan can create added turmoil in the election and the political process. And I don't, I hope Louisville stays away from that, but there's, again, no guarantee. Having that four-year staggered term gives us a level of security. And I think that is necessary as we grow. I mean, this is not a, I mean, we are a small town, but 33 years ago, we were much smaller. Now, we're, how much we've grown now, what's to say in 30, in 30 years? I mean, there's no saying what Louisville could be. And that's why I was supportive of it last week and I still am.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, my understanding at this point, staff, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, is we have, we did, we made a decision last week as a council to move forward staggered terms. So tonight, it's gonna be, back to Dr. Sadler's point, more of a how we implement this, this staggered terms. Am I correct in that assumption?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I, I had the opportunity to, and not to glass over my positioning on staggered terms. I think everyone that's had the opportunity to serve with me understands where, that I'm in favor of staggered terms and, and for the general public. If you have questions, feel free to come see me afterwards. So I'll kind of save some discussion on that. But I would like us to move forward with this conversation regarding ordinance and referendum. I am in agreement with Dr. Sadler when it comes to a referendum. I think that a referendum is really a substantial impact that's gonna be made. And this, in my opinion, is a substantial impact to our residents and to our town. And I would be in favor of us moving forward with a referendum versus us going into an ordinance and doing things. I do think that our residents need to be able to check a box on this. So that's, to move this issue forward, that would be my recommendation. And if any particular member of council has a question about my positioning on staggered terms, feel free to ask at this time, but otherwise I'd like to... Do I need to make a motion for that or where are we at on that?
I think where we are would be for a motion for staff to develop an ordinance on the process moving forward that would require a resolution, that would require a referendum to be placed on the ballot a year from this November. And from that, we would begin to draft the language of that referendum language, draft the language of the referendum and move forward with making that happen for November 2025.
Yes, Mayor.
Mayor, if I might?
Yes, ma'am.
It seems like we were still in discussion about it.
Yeah, we are. But we just, the question was asked, how we would move forward.
Oh, how we would move forward, okay, yeah. Because I did, I did want to say my opinion, as we have already decided in briefing, it would go to the public. But, you know, I, I agree with, with Dr. Sadler. And especially now that the state legislators have required us to not be nonpartisan anymore. I think whoever then is in power, that individual, that party is gonna support their person. And that's gonna be a four-year person. And I think that makes a huge difference because we're not, we're not gonna be nonpartisan anymore. And, you know, if you don't, you're gonna have the backing of the party in power when you're running. That's it.
So, thank you, Ms. Walsh. The, again, the, the issue was voted on to move towards staggered terms. The question before us is how we are gonna do that. And so the appropriate motion, I believe if I'm hearing council members correctly, and Monty weigh in on this, is to move forward drafting an ordinance to change to staggered terms with the referendum to be held in November 2025.
Correct. Mayor, can I?
Yes, sir.
Clarify that language a little bit. I think it would be appropriate to direct staff to move forward with a resolution of intent that envisions a referendum. Just to recap again, steps are, first, council would have to pass a resolution of intent. Then council would come back at a different time after notice in a hearing to potentially pass an ordinance that changes the charter. And, and if you elect to have that set up in which a referendum is necessary to essentially ratify it, that's, that's one of the avenues you can do.
Okay, so basically what you're saying, our motion should be that to have staff draft a
Resolution of intent.
To move to staggered terms. And in that resolution, it would also specify how the staggered, staggered terms would be administered and the date for when the resolution would be on the ballot.
I don't know that we necessarily need all that detail here, but, but I think if you want the, the referendum option to happen, let's be specific about you want that in there. Because there's two ways you can do it. You can either make a referendum mandatory, or you can say, we don't have to have a referendum, but if you do that, then the voters could petition for a referendum. And it sounds like at least some people are inclined towards, let's make it such that you have to have the referendum.
So then appropriately, should the motion be to draft an intent? Say it again, Elliot, so I...
I think a motion could take the form of, I move to direct staff to prepare a resolution of intent that includes a referendum.
To be on the ballot in November 25.
Sure, I, I think that's when it would have to be done. We, it absolutely cannot happen next month.
It could be a special election, but I think so the clarification for doing it in November might be, might be helpful.
Yes.
I think that may be addressed in the ordinance. I'm, I'm looking at the ordinance samples that the League of Municipality provides us to go through this process. So the first one is just a resolution of intent considering ordinance amending the charter. And then you would also pass a resolution to schedule your public hearing. Then that ordinance that you pass would have that outlined about the referendum and when that would be. Does that help?
So, so Madam Clerk, I'm sorry?
If I may add to that, when, when we're thinking about timing and dates, I know we're, we're, have always been transparent and tried to educate the public as best we can. So we had talked a little bit earlier today about the possibility of that public hearing being set for January so that we could get information in our, in our Louisville citizen, the January edition, to educate the public, you know, have, have one more avenue to get it out to them to let them know about that public hearing. So we have to be careful, but what I'm reading here is when you, when you adopt the resolution of an intent, you have to set the public hearing for some date between 10 and 45 days of that adoption. And I think January would be further than that. So we just need to be careful. It might be that the resolution needs to come before council in December and not November. So then the public, public hearing could be set in January to be within that proper window set by general statutes.
So then, based on what you just said, then what we should probably do is have a continuation of this discussion for November, at which point we would move forward with adopting the, we have to do it in December.
December.
In December for a public hearing in January, okay?
You would do your resolution December for a public hearing in January and then, and then have the ordinances following that in order for you to meet the deadline in August to get it on the ballot in November.
Does that sound reasonable?
I need some clarity, please. I thought at briefing, we had already voted and it, the majority has said we want to put it to a referendum to the, to the people. So that's been settled.
Right.
And so now, just the question is what?
We still have to go through the initial steps that general statute sets forth. We have to adopt a resolution of intent, but kind of ratifying all of these decisions that have been made. Then it, it's required to go before, to have, hold a public hearing on the matter. And then there's ordinances that have to be adopted in order to actually place it on that ballot. So, so the decision, yes, we've, we've talked about that and that decision has been made. Now we have to actually go through the, the legal binding steps that's set forth for us in general statutes to get it on that ballot.
Okay, so there's really no, no vote? I mean, we've already said we're gonna move forward. We just want to do it according to these steps. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. Yeah, I do understand now, thank you.
Okay.
The motion would still be in order, wouldn't it?
I don't think so. Because the motion would be for us to draft something and we're not at that stage yet.
Were you directing them to draft a resolution?
I, I don't think it's premature to start drafting something.
Okay, for consideration, for consideration in December.
I would leave it to the clerk as to whether we already authorized that or not.
The motion would be for a direction of staff to draft the resolution of intent. That way we can have a vote
Right.
towards that matter for public record.
A vote on process.
Correct. So we're directing staff, yeah, so the motion would be, may I make the motion, Mayor?
Sure.
Okay. Motion would be to, my motion is to direct staff to draft the resolution for intent of staggered terms, I missed the last, oh, for staggered terms. And with the process beginning or coming before council in December of 2024. And to adhere to the deadline of August so it can be on the, referendum can be on the ballot for November of 2025. That way we're covering our referendum, we're covering direction of staff, we're covering all the things that we need to cover. That's my motion.
Dory, did you capture that?
Yes, sir.
You want to read it back?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Direct staff to develop the resolution of intent with the process being in December of '24 and then adhere to the election schedule for this to be placed, the referendum to be placed on the November ballot.
That is my motion.
Here's a motion on the floor?
Second.
There's a second? Any discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are unanimous, thank you.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir, of course.
And this may be something I should have asked last week, and I apologize if so. I know that we've, there's been mention that this is a topic of discussion for numerous years. Has it ever made it to the public's vote before in our town's history? Okay. Thank you.
The decision to make us partisan elections ever made it to the public vote?
Not me to bring that up.
I got you. Very good. I got you. Very good. Stace, we have some signage to approve and the people who are advancing the signage have left.
Report down on us. Yes, council, if you may, this is the, um, an amendment that we made to the agenda in order to add this particular item. Um, so a few months ago, I'm not sure exactly how long ago it was, the Historic Missin House asked to put a sign on the Town Hall Annex property informing patrons of their location. Um, this sign request falls under the category of a landmark indicator sign that is allowed by our Unified Development Ordinance, but it does have to be approved by Town Council. So as you can see before you, um, there is a rendering of the proposed sign that they would like to install. Um, so I am before you tonight on their behalf, asking for approval of Resolution 2024 0053 for the sign to be placed at the direction of staff. And if you do, um, see in that resolution, uh, it does speak to that the sign will be funded by, uh, the Historic Missin House, but that we would, they would work with staff for the installation of that placement and everything.
Any questions for Stace?
I do.
Yes, please.
Yes, sir.
Who's first?
I'll go, because they're all looking at me. Um, I can't believe I'm the one asking this question, but on the left, I don't see any colors listed on the left. What is the color of the sign?
Brown with white lettering.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I think I see it's 24 by 18 inch. Uh, can you cite another sign that's comparable to that so we kind of envision?
Um, if you turn, let's see, if you probably turn a speed limit sign sideways, it'd be about that, about that size, I believe. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's actually much smaller. Um, they're proposing something much smaller than they would be allowed to, to do by UDO standards, but they just wanted something enough that people could see to, to point them in that direction.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the material?
It's metal, um, like a, like a street sign. It'll be on a U-post, U-channel post.
What is that? What is a U-channel?
The metal, sorry.
No, that's okay.
The metal post that you normally see street signs, the speed limit signs, street light signs, yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry.
All right. Any, any more questions? Entertained a motion, please?
Move for approval.
Second.
Makes the motion, Mr. Huffin makes a second. Any pro discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Thank you. You'll convey the approval to the Missin House folks. Administrative reports.
All right. So some upcoming fun things at Town Hall. Um, tomorrow night is movie night. Friday, October the 11th, Jumanji is playing. It is the classic one with Robin Williams. So it's, it's, um, a good movie there. Monday, October 14th starts our next bulky item pickup. Uh, we ask that items be placed by the curb by 6:00 AM on Monday morning as they will only make one pass through town. And if there's any questions about acceptable items, list, um, can be found on our town website. Shalloween will be held at Shallowford Square on Saturday, October 19th from 1:00 until 2:30 PM. This is generally for ages zero to 12. Um, and if it is raining, then that rain location, same date and time would be held at the Mary Alice Warren Community Center. Um, so probably check Facebook for that if, if it is raining. Um, the Environmental Conservation and Sustainability Committee is hosting a special recycling event at Shallowford Square on October 26th. That is from 9:00 AM until 1:00 PM. Um, the next CPR class is scheduled for November 1st. This class is actually full. Um, but we are working towards scheduling another class hopefully in early 2025. Um, and then lastly, for our artists out there, um, in our upcoming newsletter, there's a whole lot of more information about this and also on our website. But there are two call for art opportunities in town. The first one is a call for art at Shallowford Square. That deadline is November the 27th. And then the second one is a mural call for art at the Mary Alice Warren Community Center. That deadline is December 1st. So some fun and exciting things that's happening, uh, for our Public Art Advisory Committee. Um, so as always, more information on our website or call Town Hall and we'll be happy to help.
Excellent. Approvals of briefing in the action meeting?
Yes. Um, the first thing was Ordinance 2024 032, amending Budget Ordinance 2024 001 to increase dependent medical vision and dental insurance in the amount of $8,650. And the other, uh, action that was taken was council did vote to move forward with those staggered terms.
And then questions for Stacy? All righty, ladies and gentlemen, those of you who've managed to stick with us as the audience, this is the second opportunity in our public forum for you to address the council of any thoughts that you may have. Anyone wish to address the council? Anyone still awake?
Fred Franklin, 1420 Conrad Sawmill Road. Uh, I guess the first thing I'll say is I am really disappointed in this council for taking up this issue of staggered terms that was put on the agenda that was sent out a couple of days before the briefing meeting last week. And the fact that a vote was taken at the briefing before it ever gets out to the public, that's just not very good. Anyhow, uh, I hope as you go forward, that you will finally understand that there's many things that's going to have to be changed in that charter. You're going to have to make the decision, does the mayor continue to vote on every issue? What's the size of the council? Five members so that you can do it like Clemens, you have three run every two years? There's a lot of things. It's one of those things, like I say, it wasn't broke. I don't understand what you're trying to fix. With that being said, I'm going to move on to a different issue. The lift station. I served on a sewer committee as, as a council liaison and at times it got pretty stinky doing that, I'll tell you that. Uh, because Mr. Singer was on there. Uh, that lift station that we currently have, a couple of things y'all might not be aware of. It's at a capacity. It's old. The lines leading from it are at capacity to get it back to where it goes. You can't add any more to the current lift station. The new lift station needs to be there to replace the old one. Best thing to do is relocate it or the studies showed it needs to go. And what that will do is open up development, if you will, behind the food line and the old horse farm that's been sitting there vacant, that will bring and expand the tax base of this town dramatically from the type of development that can go in that space and that meets our, our comprehensive plan from point A to point B. But that lift station's been deemed to be repaired for years and upgraded for years. It's been on hold till this project come along. They need to run concurrently. The vote you, you took and then retracted did effectively not only quash the road project, if you will, uh, it would prevent any future development, as I just mentioned. You're not going to build and put a cap on either end just at the end of the roads. And I understand your concerns of where that money's coming from, but you've got to have the vision looking forward that that lift station that is proposed has got to be put in. And the best time to put it in is in conjunction with the construction of that road. Now I've sat through a lot of meetings, listened to a lot of engineers, and I'm not claiming to be an engineer, but you've got some that you're paying money for. Listen to them and pay attention to get up to speed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Council members, final comments this evening. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, so I had the opportunity, um, North Carolina League of Municipality sends out a magazine and I checked my mail today or yesterday and took a look at it. And I just want to thank, um, the town and thank staff and, and Mayor for, um, what we are contributing to the state as a whole. We have offered our Mary Alice Warren Community Center, um, for recent training in late September that the North Carolina League of Municipality's had. Um, Mayor, you're serving in a capacity with the North Carolina League of Municipality. So it just reminded me when I looked at that magazine today of our contribution as a town of what we're doing statewide. So thank you to everyone that is, um, participating and involved with the North Carolina League of Municipality.
Yes, ma'am. I, I see you poised.
Oh, me? Well, I just wanted to thank everyone that's still here with us. Um, this is what it's all about. It's why I chose to step up and serve, uh, to hear what my fellow residents have to say. And please know that I hear your voices. It impacts greatly, as it should, what I do up here and what I do on the council. And it's late, you're here, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments this evening, council members? Finally, just, uh, our certainly prayers and thoughts go to all those in Western North Carolina, certainly Florida, but certainly our, our neighboring communities. Many of those towns are smaller than we are. Uh, many of them physically don't exist anymore. Uh, there's, there's geography there, but there aren't any towns. Um, keep, keep those folks in your prayers. Um, there's a lot of work that has to occur over the next few years to even attempt to rebuild what was there. So it's going to be a, it's going to be a daunting task. So, um, our, our fellow North Carolina residents and certainly our elected officials that have to deal with this in Western North Carolina know that our thoughts are with you. With that, there's no other comments. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I just think Jane and I did want to say just to short, if you'll bear with us, we just want to share something.
Almost forgot, have to sleep.
Yeah, no, if you'll bear with us, this is important to us.
Do you want to go first?
Well, it, this is breast cancer awareness month. I wish everybody else was here, but as you can see, many of us are wearing pink and some of you are as well, so we thank you for that. Um, and Jane and I have talked about this, so she's, uh, okay, saying that she and I are sister survivors and we actually are sharing 16 years cancer-free. And we want to recognize all the folks out there that are facing this right now. And, and I just wanted to add, and Jane has some comments as well, that, um, I just want to share, it affects women, but it affects men as well. It's rare for men, but it does affect men because when I was going through my journey, I met a man who was affected by it. And I just want to say for those gentlemen out there and up here, this gentleman shared that for four years, his wonderful wife tried to get him to go and get checked out. And it wasn't until four years later that he finally did. And thankfully, when I met him, he was doing well, but he was in fourth stage breast cancer. So I encourage women and men to really check because it's what we don't know that can hurt us.
Thank you, Julia. And although Julia's new on council, we are bosom buddies. But in all sincerity, please do have your loved ones, starting at age 40 now, to be checked for, for breast cancer, because we still have 42,000 a year who do die from, from breast cancer. And early detection, I think it was for me and it was for you, Julia, I think made all the difference. So, uh, I'd encourage you with, to certainly do that. And also now they have assessments starting at age 25. You can do genetic testing. Say you have it in your family, um, in relatives' history, that that is not doing anything but being proactive to check off your health concerns and needs. So do it for your sisters, for your mothers, for your aunts, for your loved ones, to bring up the issue and see that they have been screened. And thank those who did wear pink.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you, Julia.
Thank you.
Congratulations on 16 years. That's wonderful. And, uh, thank my bride of 35 years, my lovely bouquet that she made me this evening as I was getting ready to walk out of the house and she said, you don't have pink on. And so she made sure I was prepared this evening. So, so thank you and all my lovely bride. All righty, with that, council members, we'll entertain a motion, please. Do a adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
The one makes the motion, Mr. Huffin makes a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for staying with us here in the council chambers, those folks that are watching at home on Facebook or TV6. Thank you very much. I hope you appreciated and enjoyed the discussion we had this evening. That we can disagree, but we're not going to be disagreeable in our process. With that, we'll see you all next month.